Thank you. This year, we are celebrating our 150-year anniversary. And so what a better way to celebrate that than recognizing some of our community members that support us in the various ways. And we would just like to give some recognition to them. So to begin with, we are going to recognize 150 community members in our district. And the way we are going to do that is through the distribution of this very special golden tickets. I should have brought one, but they are literally golden tickets. You can see them in the pictures. Each school and department will get a ticket, a number of tickets to distribute. And then we will be tracking those who are recognized to make sure that everyone gets at least one ticket and that there aren't duplicates. They will be presented and accompanied with their information. And when they get their ticket, they're going to get one of the 150-year commemorative shirts. But unlike the general ones that are available to the public, they will have the VIP community member logo, which is this logo right there in that gold glittery area. That's what will be on the shirt. So it's just kind of like a little separate set apart so that they can be recognized by us and recognized out in the district. And then all of their shirts, once they get the tickets, they should be ordered by February, the end of February. And so that ticket will come with instructions and information on how to get those. We will be taking their picture and recognizing them on our socials, on our website, our newsletters, and just kind of just really giving a little special spot for those community members who kind of go out of their way to help us. Nominations could look like, and I say could because this is a very, very limited list of ways that we can identify some of our community members, but it could be the student who helps out others in class, a parent who makes their presence, whose presence makes a difference for students, the bus driver who can tell funny stories about their students, a community member who signs up for the concession stand, a grandparent who you have seen at their grandchildren's events, staff member who seems to always find a way, a staff member who has awesome attendance, the teacher who mentors new staff with their technology, a student who lets you know if other students are struggling so that they can get help, and the community member who volunteers wholeheartedly even though they don't have any students in the district. So again, that's a very limited list of examples of how we might identify and recognize these VIP community members, but it kind of gives you an idea of what we're looking at. We're looking at more than just community members. We're looking at students, parents, staff members, volunteers, just so that we can recognize everybody. And this is what the back of the shirt will look like. And so we will be starting and kicking this off in January. Yeah, are there any questions?
Any questions from the board?
I love it. Good job.
Thanks.
That does sound great. Thank you, Caitlin.
Yeah.
All right. So moving on, we have Dr. Crane speaking to us about career and college teams.
Thank you. I'm going to actually pass it on to Erica Frafford and Kevin Rich, who are career and college coordinators at OCHS. They serve multiple, all our high schools. And I'm excited about what they're going to tell you today.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having us.
Yes. We want to be respectful of time. Could we go to the next slide? Oh, there we go. So we just wanted to present to you guys to kind of discuss what we do and help you understand kind of where we are and how we interact with the community as well with our students and our goals for getting our students' career and college ready.
All right. So it's on now. All right. Thank you. All right. So part of our strategic plan is we set some goals. And so this is just a snapshot of some of the stuff that we have done at Oregon City High School this fall. So this fall, we had 34 different colleges that visit us. And those are colleges that come to the high school, and students can meet with them about the admissions process. They can talk to them about scholarships. They can talk to them about what's available at that school so that they can, students can explore and see if that's a good fit. We had over 747 students attend those college visits, so we were at really good capacity. Not surprising, OSU and University of Oregon are our biggest draws with over 80 students in every, each of those presentations. We had 14 local colleges participate in our college application week. So that's a week that we have every November that we help students come and actually fill out their applications. So a lot of students maybe don't need help, but those that do, maybe they need that connection or don't understand the application process, or maybe they need someone to look over their essay. That's an opportunity for them to get that opportunity to have feedback and submit their applications. We took over 140 kids to the Portland National College Fair, which was in the convention center. There was over 200 colleges and opportunities for them to explore. We took three busloads. We had so many people that wanted to go. And then now we're working on our Oregon Promise and FAFSA completion rates. Those just opened up just recently in the last two weeks. And our goal is to have increased our Oregon Promise percentage and our FAFSA completion rates. You can see a snapshot of our college application week. Students get to do their stickers. And then as part of that, we're growing is that we're enhancing the use of Naviance, which is our career college program platform. Students are logging on to that about 1.4 times per month, which is a big increase from what they have previously. And we have a couple of things coming up in the future. We have a college and career fair, which we're combining with our academic planning night so that we can get a two-for-one. Parents can come to the school, then get their academic planning done. They can also connect with colleges. We'll have trades there. We'll get the unions there. We have Clackamas Fire, a bunch of different entities so that students and parents can explore all the opportunities after high school graduation. And then we're also working on students with their four-to-plus-two-year plans, which is basically planning out their high school career and then thinking about two years afterwards, which is implementing and how to implement those. Next slide.
So these are our 16 career clusters. They are at a national framework for, to kind of, how to discuss careers and options. There is a lot of overlap between them, like IT has its own one, but as we all know, IT is in literally everything that we do nowadays. So there's a lot of overlap and everything, which is also a big part of what we try to communicate with the students is that just because you want to go into marketing doesn't mean you have to work at a marketing firm. You could work at a bank. You could work at a school district. You could work anywhere because everybody's got to do that now. And so there's a lot of overlap in all of it that we do. So there is like 16 different clusters that all kind of tie together in some way, shape, or form. We had the opportunity to present to the instructional leadership team, and it was actually a lot of fun to be able to hear them or and see them. We did an activity of naming careers. And it's harder than you think because there's a lot of unique careers out there that you may not realize people make money doing. But it's easy to get like the big ones, like doctor, teacher, lawyer, policeman, fireman. But there's so many unique things that if you're passionate about and the world needs it, you can, you can find somewhere that you can make money doing that. And so just, this is a way for students to kind of think and then be able to say, I really want to go into health services, but kind of expand what that means and not just being a doctor or EMT or paramedic, but that there's a lot of options there.
All right. My timer's going off, so we'll keep it quick. What you have in your hands right now is our one-pager. So part of our strategic plan is to make these one-pagers available for our district. This is our first draft of one of the one-pagers. So this is kind of an idea of what we're trying to go for. So these are classes that are available at the high school, and we are doing them district-wide. So we're seeing what's available at Case and what's available at OXXLA. And then how these career paths, so if I'm a parent or a student and I'm thinking of this one particularly, accounting, I can look at this and say, okay, here are classes I might be able to take at high school. Here are some potential post-secondary opportunities for me. I can get an associate. I can get a certificate. I can go to a four-year college. Here are some potential job occupations that might be available to me, something in finance. Where are some potential places I could work? What are some skills that I might learn? So the idea about the, behind these is that students and families can take a look at these and say, okay, I'm interested in this. Here's kind of a pathway to go so I can follow that pathway. All right, next slide.
These are just some fun pictures from some of the events that we've done over the last year. A couple like job site visits, things like that. And then one of the, the big things that we have implemented or brought back since COVID is our Career Spotlight Day, which I would love to invite all of you to come and speak at our Career Spotlight Day. But it's a chance for, our goal for this winter one in February is to bring in 60 individuals who are, be able, able to talk about their jobs, what it takes to get there, and kind of like what a day in, in that is. And we've had a lot of success with that. We had a student who was really wanting to go into some sort of engineering and went to the machine learning engineer's talk and walked out and was like, I know what kind of engineering I want to do now. But in the same, we have a lot of students who, who feel lost and have no idea what they plan to do after high school, who have been able to go to these and were like, I think this is something I want to start looking into and pursuing. So it's been really exciting to kind of see some of that stuff click in students' heads and, and think like, oh, I could, I could do this for the rest of my life or for the foreseeable future. And then now I know how to plan if I do change careers like a lot of people do.
All right. So next step, we'll wrap up and then we'll answer some questions if you have any. So we're seeing, we want to let you know that these efforts are working. We talk to a lot of students every day and throughout the years, and we're seeing an increase of students who are being able to articulate their plans after high school, whatever those are. And a lot of them are, I am interested in the trades, and I know I need to get into an apprenticeship. So how do I get into an apprenticeship? What kind of skills do I need? A lot of them are, I might need a two-year degree. How do I connect with CCC? All of those kinds of things are working. So we're seeing the return investment with our students being able to articulate those plans. And then we're making, using those plans to help adjust our class offerings. So we are looking at offering more opportunities for students to explore those kinds of offerings that are available, including one that's like intro to the trades, getting students, you know, that opportunity in high school before they graduate to explore career paths so that they can make a determination saying, okay, I'm interested in this. This is what potentially some of the skills that I might need. And then moving to a semester system will also help us align our high schools so all three high schools are on a similar schedule. And hopefully, we'll increase our capacity to coordinate with CCC, which we do quite often, and be able to expand our offerings through their programs as well, which we're very excited about. And that, I think that is our last slide, so we can take any questions?
Thank you. Board chair.
I love it. Good job.
Thanks.
That does sound great. Thank you, Caitlin.
Yeah.
All right, so moving on, we have Dr. Crane speaking to us about career and college teams.
Thank you. I'm going to actually pass it on to Erica Fraffier and Kevin Rich, who are career and college coordinators at OCHS. They serve multiple, all our high schools. And I'm excited about what they're going to tell you today.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having us.
Yes, we want to be respectful of time. Can we go to the next slide? Oh, there we go. So we just wanted to present to you guys to kind of discuss what we do and help you understand kind of where we are and how we interact with the community as well with our students and our goals for getting our students' career and college ready.
All right, so.
It's on now. All right, thank you. All right, so part of our strategic plan is we set some goals. And so this is just a snapshot of some of the stuff that we have done at Oregon City High School this fall. So this fall, we had 34 different colleges that visit us. And those are colleges that come to the high school and students can meet with them about the admissions process. They can talk to them about scholarships. They can talk to them about what's available at that school so that they can, students can explore and see if that's a good fit. We had over 747 students attend those college visits, so we were at really good capacity. Not surprising, OSU and University of Oregon are our biggest draws with over 80 students in every, each of those presentations. We had 14 local colleges participate in our college application week. So that's a week that we have every November that we help students come and actually fill out their applications. So a lot of students maybe don't need help, but those that do, maybe they need that connection or don't understand the application process, or maybe they need someone to look over their essay. That's an opportunity for them to get that opportunity to have feedback and submit their applications. We had, we took over 140 kids to the Portland National College Fair, which was in the Convention Center. There was over 200 colleges and opportunities for them to explore. It was, we took three busloads. We had so many people that wanted to go. And then now we're working on our Oregon Promise and FAFSA completion rates. Those just opened up just recently in the last two weeks. And our goal is to have, increase our Oregon Promise percentage and our FAFSA completion rates. You can see a snapshot of our college application week. The students get to do their stickers. And then as part of that, we're growing is that we're enhancing the use of NAVYANCE, which is our career college program platform. Students are logging on to that about 1.4 times per month, which is a big increase from what they have previously. And we have a couple of things coming up in the future. We have a college and career fair, which we're combining with our academic planning night so that we can get a two-for-one. Parents can come to the school, they can get their academic planning done. They can also connect with colleges. We'll have trades. There, we'll get the unions there. We have Clackamas Fire, a bunch of different entities so that students and parents can explore all the opportunities after high school graduation. And then we're also working on students with their four-to-plus-two-year plans, which is basically planning out their high school career and then thinking about two years afterwards, which is implementing and how to implement those. Next slide.
I believe that's you. That's you.
So these are our 16 career clusters. They are at a national framework for, to kind of, how to discuss careers and options. There is a lot of overlap between them, like IT has its own one, but as we all know, IT is in literally everything that we do nowadays. So there's a lot of overlap in everything, which is also a big part of what we try to communicate with the students is that just because you want to go into marketing doesn't mean you have to work at a marketing firm. You could work at a bank. You could work at a school district. You could work anywhere because everybody's got to do that now. And so there's a lot of overlap in all of it that we do. So there is like 16 different clusters that all kind of tie together in some way, shape, or form. We had the opportunity to present to the instructional leadership team, and it was actually a lot of fun to be able to hear them or and see them. We did an activity of naming careers. And it's harder than you think because there's a lot of unique careers out there that you may not realize people make money doing. But it's easy to get like the big ones, like doctor, teacher, lawyer, policeman, fireman. But there's so many unique things that if you're passionate about and the world needs it, you can, you can find somewhere that you can make money doing that. And so just, this is a way for students to kind of think and then be able to say, I really want to go into health services, but kind of expand what that means and not just being a doctor or EMT or paramedic, but there's a lot of options there.
All right. My timer's going off, so we'll keep it quick. What you have in your hands right now is our one-pagers. So part of our strategic plan is to make these one-pagers available for our district. This is our first draft of one of the one-pagers. So this is kind of an idea of what we're trying to go for. So these are classes that are available at the high school, and we are doing them district-wide. So we're seeing what's available at Case and what's available at Ochsla. And then how these career paths, so if I'm a parent or a student and I'm thinking of this one particularly accounting, I can look at this and say, okay, here are classes I might be able to take at high school. Here are some potential post-secondary opportunities for me. I can get an associate. I can get a certificate. I can go to a four-year college. Here are some potential job occupations that might be available to me. Something in finance. Where are some potential places I could work? What are some skills that I might learn? So the idea about, behind these is that students and families can take a look at these and say, okay, I'm interested in this. Here's kind of a pathway to go so I can follow that pathway. All right, next slide.
These are just some fun pictures from some of the events that we've done over the last year. A couple like job site visits, things like that. And then one of the, the big things that we have implemented or brought back since COVID is our Career Spotlight Day, which I would love to invite all of you to come and speak at our Career Spotlight Day. But it's a chance for, our goal for the, this winter one in February is to bring in 60 individuals who are, be able, able to talk about their jobs, what it takes to get there and kind of like what a day in that is. And we've had a lot of success with that. We had a student who was really, wanted to go into some sort of engineering and went to the machine learning engineer's talk and walked out and was like, I know what kind of engineering I want to do now. But in the same, we have a lot of students who, who feel lost and have no idea what they plan to do after high school, who have been able to go to these and were like, I think this is something I want to start looking into and pursuing. So it's been really exciting to kind of see some of that stuff click in students' heads and, and think like, oh, I could, I could do this for the rest of my life or for the foreseeable future. And then now I know how to plan if I do change careers, like a lot of people do.
All right, so next step, we'll wrap up and then we'll answer some questions if you have any. So we're seeing, we want to let you know that these efforts are working. We talk to a lot of students every day and throughout the years, and we're seeing an increase of students who are being able to articulate their plans after high school, whatever those are. And a lot of them are, I am interested in the trades and I know I need to get into an apprenticeship. So how do I get into an apprenticeship? What kind of skills do I need? A lot of them are, I might need a two-year degree. How do I connect with CCC? All of those kind of things are working. So we're seeing the return investment with our students being able to articulate those plans. And then we're making, using those plans to help adjust our class offerings. So we are looking at offering more opportunities for students to explore those kind of offerings that are available, including one that's like intro to the trades, getting students, you know, that opportunity in high school before they graduate to explore career paths so that they can make a determination saying, okay, I'm interested in this. This is what potentially some of the skills that I might need. And then moving to a semester system will also help us align our high schools. So all three high schools are on a similar schedule. And hopefully will increase our capacity to coordinate with CCC, which we do quite often, and be able to expand our offerings through their programs as well, which we're very excited about. And that, I think that is our last slide, so we can take any questions?
Thank you. Board to have questions?
Sure. What kind of partnerships do we have with CCC now?
We currently have several partnerships. So we have an expanded partnership, expanded options partnership where students can take classes here that, instead of their high school classes. So they're, the high schools do it a little bit differently. Each high school does theirs a little bit differently. But for ours at the OCHS, we have an early college program, which students who have completed their graduation requirements can take full-time classes at the high school. And so they can get ahead on whatever degree or if they're interested in a certificate. So we have several students taking advantage of the welding certificate, being able to take those classes during their high school, which we don't offer physically at our building. So that is one of the programs we have. We have several, well, hundreds of students that get ACC credit. And we save thousands of dollars by getting those ACC credits. And then we also partner with them as far as, just the students that want a little bit more are usually able to partner with them to let them take a class and receive outside credit.
That's great. Just as a high school parent of a student there, what's the, what's the best route for me to kind of explore with my student, the different opportunities? Is it through the, like, the website or is there a way for me to see NAVYANCE or? Career fairs?
Yes, career fairs are great. So when we have career fairs, we always invite our CCC partners in, and they're really great at coming in to most of our events that we have, any of our evening events that we have to have conversations with parents. The website is also really good. We try to keep that up to date for options with parents. You can also reach out to us and we'd be happy to help with all those coordinations. And we often connect people with CCC, with our representatives here, to help them get connected and see what's a great fit for them. If you're just going for like a transfer degree or if you want to go for a certificate route, there's different advisors in the program. We can connect you with them as well.
And I think part of the strategic plan goal for these one-pagers is to make sure they're in the hands of families and students. So that can help as well be a good discussion to have with your children.
Then not as a board member, but just as a community member, what are ways that we can help support the efforts from the College of Careers Department?
We talk a lot. I'm a coach as well, and I coach a team sport. And I talk about team a lot. And one of the things that we're asking for our college and career community is teamwork. And that teamwork involves talking to students about the different opportunities out there and being optimistic about their prospects for what their future holds and that they can do it. There are options out there regardless of how you've done in high school. Not everyone's a stellar high school student, and that doesn't mean that there aren't options out there for you. So having community support, we run an ASPIRE program at high school. I think actually all three schools are looking at like becoming part of that FAFSA Plus ASPIRE program. Was it just another way for community members to connect with students? The more that students can hear from different people that there are options out there and that might be, you might be the connection that, that drives them to be successful after high school. Yep.
Well, I love this. I know that as the career fields evolve over time, it's hard for families to feel like that they know the best way to support their students. So I think this is really awesome. I'm really grateful for all the hard work that you guys do. Thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are up to patron input.
Yes, you have no electronic input this evening, but you do have several in-person. So I'm going to go ahead and read the procedures.
Thank you.
And then I will begin to call people up. The Oregon City School Board of Education highly values public input in making important decisions that affect Oregon City's children and community. To ensure the public has an opportunity to offer comments during the school board meetings and to ensure the board can conduct the important business of the district, speakers must observe certain basic rules of conduct. The following guidelines apply to all public comment. All members of the public attending school board meetings must treat each other and the board with respect. No hate speech is allowed. Individuals are not permitted to engage in conduct that interferes with the ability of other individuals to observe the board meetings, interferes with the ability of other members of the public to offer comment to the board, or interferes with the ability of the board to conduct its business. Members of the public may offer objective criticism of school operations and programs, but the board will not hear complaints concerning specific school personnel or other authorized individuals. Complaints of this nature shall be addressed through Public Complaints Policy KL-AR. Please keep your comments concise, as you will have three minutes to speak. You will receive a one-minute warning. Please be aware that the board will not be responding to your comments. This is a time for them to listen. Please be sure to state your name and affiliation to the district when you come up front. And I'm going to try to do the timing. Oh, you can? Okay, great. I was going to have to change my ringer because I didn't know if it was going to be my grandson gets my phone a lot. I would like to call Samantha Angoletta. I'm not sure if I said that correctly. Great, to the front. Kirsten Baldwin? Okay.
And Kirsten, as everyone's joining us, if the timer goes off and you're not able to finish, you can follow up with an email with anything else you'd like to share.
Thank you. My name is Kirsten Baldwin. I am the mother of two neurodivergent boys and children at Gaffney Elementary. We are currently at the center of a state investigation involving certain staff members at the school. The principal and two support staff members. Tonight, I am going to address my serious concerns at the, I would usually laughless response from the district to my son's case. I find it extremely distressing that the current message that you express to students and parents is that the previous acting principal, who really my son will be returning. What kind of message does this send to children who are victims? It is being relayed that the person who caused them trauma will be returned. My son is still feeling from the abuse that he experienced, and there is potential for him to be re-traumatized by this person, and this is not acceptable. Furthermore, the lack of response from the superintendent is shocking as the parent of the victim. Doctors Sisker has been entirely absent in this traumatizing time. I have had one annual exchange with Doctor Sisker and zero direct communication. If your child is harmed at the hands of a school staff member, is that among the leader of the?
We need to not use staff names during public comment. Thank you.
For a minimum, I would expect to receive direct communication from my boss. All of my communications with the district have been passed off to the assistant superintendent, and the response from board members was that their confidence would be that this matter would be taken seriously. In this time, the interim principal has been a light in a very dark time for my family. She has consistently shown an understanding of emotional support of kids with special needs, and I recognize under the previous admin, there was a serious lack of appropriate support of children's emotional needs. My son is experiencing daily emotional dysregulation incidents that have become almost non-existent with the support of his current support person and the climate of the school under, the climate of the school under the current administration. It is my hope that the members of the board take these concerns seriously. It has been a heavy burden on the wellbeing of my family. My children are entitled to attend their home school and feel safe doing so. The Gaffney community needs assurances that our children are safe and carefree.
Okay, thank you. Now Samantha? Okay. And please make sure that the mic button is green on there.
Hello. Perfect. My name is Samantha Angoletta, and I'm also a concerned parent of Gaffney Lane students. I currently have three children attending Gaffney Lane this year. One of my sons is a fifth grader this year, so we've been proud Gaffney Grizzlies for years now. Over the last year or so, my trust has seriously eroded for several reasons, not the least of which is the active state investigation against the previous principal and the palpable decline in staff and student morale. I'm not only worried about the physical safety of my and other family's students, I'm gravely concerned about the emotional safety of Gaffney students under the leadership of the previous principal. As we all know, emotional safety and the connection which that provides is a vital tool of equity. It is the foundation upon which socio-emotional and academic skills are built. I am also concerned for the well-being of the current Gaffney staff. We love our teachers and support staff, and I think we can all agree that an affirming supportive environment for staff creates an affirming supportive environment for students. I think under the previous administration, there was a blatant lack of neurodiversity-affirming practices, including awareness and affirmation of students with anxiety, trauma, and other mental health needs. It's impossible to meet the emotional and behavioral needs of students if staff feels unsupported or lacks access to additional much-needed resources. This creates an environment severely lacking in equity and often is not in alignment with a student's right to a free, appropriate education. I will say that under the leadership of the interim principal, I've noticed a positive change and what feels like forward motion into repairing harm, rebuilding community, and paving a path forward for positive change. Of course, we still have a long way to go. There's a lot of work to do. And as a parent, I need confirmation that we will not be going back. My kids love their school, teachers, and support staff, and I should feel safe sending them there. I feel safe now under the leadership of the interim principal, but I will not feel that way if the previous principal resumes her role. I know I'm not alone. I'm pleading with the board and the superintendent tonight to hear our grave concern. Our kids should be at the forefront of all decision-making that happens within the Oregon City School District. So the choice feels clear to me. Please take actionable steps to ensure that Gaffney families and staff get a re-chance to rebuild with new administration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call Kayla King to the front.
My name is Kayla King. I am a parent of two children.
Kayla, sorry to interrupt. We'll start your time over, but will you push to make sure the green button's on?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry. Okay. My name is Kayla King. I am a parent of two children who attend Gaffney Lane Elementary. I am here tonight to express concerns about the collective climate and environment of the school, which has progressively declined each year since my oldest started at the school in 2021. As a result of what I believe to be mismanagement, there seems to be a lack of general awareness in terms of anxiety and the various ways it can present, neurodiversity and the complexities of masking, sensory processing, trauma-informed and emotionally-affirming practices, and de-escalation strategies individualized to each child. All staff could greatly benefit from ongoing professional development specific to these areas. In addition, staff could benefit from retraining on the restorative practice framework adopted by the Oregon City School District, which, and I quote, "seek to bring offended parties together in a spirit of conflict resolution and peace." State laws regarding student conduct still apply and consequences are given when appropriate, but the number one practice that that employs is restorative in nature and not punishing. Moving towards more proactive solutions in meeting student needs prior to dysregulation rather than responding and punishing behaviors that present as a result of overwhelm and dysregulation. I am disappointed with the lack of transparency and communication with Gaffney families during the investigation process, specifically in regard to the school operations and major staff changes. In particular, one of these staff changes being the main support contact for managing my daughter's 504. I was not made aware. She was on leave until I attempted to email her and it bounced back. When I reached out to find out who would be in charge of managing her 504, they said they would get back to me. It took a couple of weeks before I was made aware that someone from the district would be managing her 504. Major staff changes like this make it hard for students to maintain meaningful relationships that cultivate a sense of safety and trust and affects the overall sense of community. Both staff and students deserve a safe and supportive environment that's conducive to learning. I am pleased to see that there are positive changes in motion with the interim principal in the building and efforts to rebuild community with families through monthly coffee chats with her. Given the circumstances for multiple staff members leaving, my trust in the school environment has faltered. If the formal acting principle is reinstated, I do not feel comfortable sending my kids to an environment and I am not convinced would be emotionally-affirming or safe and could be detrimental to the long-term mental health of my children. I would love for them to attend their home school, but I am prepared to seek alternate options if necessary.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to ask Beth Nazaretta to come to the front.
Hello. My name is Beth Nazaretta, and I'm here to just bring up some questions about the trimester and semester change. My son came home kind of upset about it, so we had a discussion and there were some pros and cons. So I just wanted to make it aware so that we could just have more discussion about it. The pros that I identified with the change would be more time in class, bigger projects available for students, potentially getting help from the teachers or support staff having longer class times. The grading periods wouldn't change as often, so school counselors would have an easier time with that. And there is only one extra elective in the year, if you calculate it out. I don't know how beneficial that would be, but maybe for some students. Some of the cons that I identified would be that some classes require and do better and are more important to meet every day, like theater and choir and math. Those things you need repetition, so a daily class would be better for those. So I see that as being a negative effect on a student. If a student misses a day with this new semester, given that they're really only in class for two of the days of the week, they would miss about 50% of the class if they missed one of that day in that class for the week instead of 20% if they were going every single day, so five days a week. Same would go with a sub. If a sub was in the class for one of the days of the week, they would be suffering for 50%. Also, for test-taking, I know like myself, I have a really hard time taking tests. So with the trimester, there is less information. Maybe not that bad, but there's less time that the student has to remember in order to take a test. So if they're in class for three months, they have to remember something from three months ago to take a test. So that would be a negative. And also, would you eliminate the early release day on Wednesday if you went to a trimester? Like, what would that look like? Would you eliminate that altogether? And if the Friday is the alternate of the week and there was like potentially a snow day, which we don't get a lot, or a holiday or something where the school district had to take that day off, how would you handle that?
You can email us if there's anything else you'd like to share. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Jen Tate to come to the front.
Good evening. I'm Jen Tate. I don't have a big speech prepared, but I am here in solidarity with my wonderful friends who are amazing parents. I too am a Gaffney parent. I love Gaffney. We love our teachers. But we definitely feel the lack of community. The staff doesn't seem as happy as they used to be. We're definitely seeing a turn in the right direction with whom we have in charge right now, and it feels really good. And in a place where our kids are for a majority of their young life, I want to know they're enjoying themselves and that they're safe, not just my kids, all the kids. That's really all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And Candace Mullen.
Hi. I'm Candace Moeen. My daughter's also good at GAFNE Lane. I didn't prepare anything, but I have had issues with the previous principal, and I was already very frustrated with her before.
Excuse me. We cannot discuss complaints against specific staff members as part of public comment.
Okay.
So we're gonna, it needs to be much, it's okay. It just needs, we just need to follow policy.
Well, I'm just, I'm here to support my brave, strong mothers behind me and also advocate for the children of the school district, and I would like to see the school move forward in the right direction and not backwards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That is your final piece of patron input this evening.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, everyone who joined us tonight for public comment. We do appreciate you taking the time to join us. Thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on, we have board communication. Do we have a student representative?
We do not have a student representative, but we did type up the notes from the last meeting. We did go to Ochslaw to tour Eastham because many of the students, we usually go to OCHS, but this time we went to Ochslaw, so we wanted to thank Principal Craig for giving us a tour over there. And they reviewed your agenda. They left comments for you related to the new course proposals that they're really excited about, and also about the graduation policy. And I would say the overarching thing is they just want more documentation and more explanation early because there was quite a few freshmen in the room going, wow, we didn't know this. We need, so they want more forecasting materials, more explicit instructions about how to earn these different levels of attainment that they aspire to. But please review those notes.
Thank you. And now our OCEA representative, Asha.
Hello. Thanks for having me here. It's my first time here, so excited to be here. So we had conferences this past month at the end of November in our middle school and elementary schools, and they were a success. I know especially I'm an elementary school teacher, and they were very well-attended. Families were excited to come into schools and see the teachers. And we also let some of the parents know that we would not be having spring conferences for elementary schools this year, even though I know middle school and high school still do have some spring conferences. And then, as we're looking forward towards the next couple of months here, we have our winter break coming up, and I know this can be a stressful time and also an exciting time in schools these last couple of weeks before break. I know some teachers overwhelmed, but it's also fun. You know, we get to do a lot of fun things while also trying to keep that kind of routine going. And then, as we're looking towards January, that January 6th day that we all come back is a teacher workday, so teachers don't have meetings or students that day, and it's a really valuable time for teachers because we all really value getting to come back after those two weeks and get our classrooms in order, get everything organized for students to return. I think it's a very important time for us to get prepared to reteach routines and get back into things as we come back from winter break, and students are kind of out of the habit of all their school things that they're used to. And then we're also looking towards School Board Appreciation Month coming up, so something to think about for all of you. And we wanted to wish all our school board members a happy holidays as we're going into winter break. So that's all we've got.
Thank you. And our OSEA rep.
Hi. Good evening. We had our bargaining survey open this last week, and so we've got some results in from that that I'll be sharing with classified before we get started with bargaining. And the top three, though, of course, were salary and wages. The COLAs and the insurance were the top three of the things we asked them to prioritize. So we've heard them on that, and we feel the same way with them on that, so we'll be starting that hopefully in January with the district. The state OSEA does have scholarships that are opening up. Some of those deadlines are in January, all the way then through like April, and there might be a couple in May. There's Lou Gerber Union Plus Scholarship, Guy Davis, the past president, or John Brown Undergrad, and then there's like four more. So there's a lot of variety if people are looking for scholarships. Some of them are for OSEA members, and some of them are for spouses or their children even. So I really encourage people, if they're looking for education assistance, it's at OSEA, and then look up the education scholarships page. And then I'm gonna send some of that more information, a link to Caitlin as well, so we can get that on the website, so that kids that are looking to go to college are, have that information in front of them as well. And then we're looking forward to tomorrow. We have a visit from our state president and vice president and our zone director, and they're all coming to Oregon City School District tomorrow. So we're looking forward to that. I will be meeting with them at 6:00 in the morning, bright and early, so for their first stop. They'll have two teams and visiting six different locations, so we're looking forward to that tomorrow.
Thank you. Moving on to reports and discussion, we have a bond presentation with Jeremy and Caitlin. Welcome back, Jeremy. Thanks for joining us.
All right. Caitlin, you joining me, or are you gonna go from there?
I'll go from here since I'm running the show.
Stereo. All right. Fun to be back in front of you now that you have passed your bond. Congratulations. And you got the certified results last week, and you know, it was close in KG affair, but really, we wanted to talk a little bit about the win, how, you know, talk a little about what, you know, things we did. I know you heard a little bit of a rough one right after the election last, but wanted to do a wrap-up and then talk about the path ahead a little bit and next steps. So, following results here, you know, these, one of the things that was very interesting when I looked at your, you know, final numbers is, I went back and looked at your polling, and we landed right exactly where your initial ask was in the polling. Like, we were right there. And we knew going into this, we said it all along, it was a 50-50 proposition. And, well, it was a 50-50 proposition. But, you know, a little more. And I think one of the things, and I know this is, you lived this during, but I wanna talk about, a little tiny bit about this, which is that, you know, when we decided and we talked a lot about what election we want to go for, and are we ready for November? And remember, we were saying, hey, you know, the type of folks who are gonna be voting in November are really the folks who are gonna need to turn out and win. And we kind of gave you a model of like off-year election versus a presidential or a larger turnout. And you look at your first count at 8:00, when we were down, that was representing about 40% of the vote had been counted at that point, that first count. And that was the people who had all turned in their ballots over the first two weeks. So how they do it in Oregon is, they, you know, they count the ballots based on when they come into the elections office. They can't obviously count them before Election Day, but they process them and verify the signatures, and then they will put them aside, and then they start counting on 8:00 AM on election morning, Election Day morning. So that first count represented what was gonna be like, you know, the folks who vote in every election. So that 40% turnout would be about what a May primary next year would be. And then we started picking up votes every count, and that was the people who were later voters, you know, parents who were very, you know, busy and trying to get their ballots dropped off, or, you know, younger voters, and so, or folks who are less likely to vote in every election. So you saw why that mattered in real time as you were looking at the results. So I just wanted to point that out. I said this a lot during the effort over the last two years, but, you know, materials matter, producing a lot of things matter, but conversations, connections matter the most. It's about those two-way conversations, and, you know, developing this in the pre-bond phase was really about trying to get into as many spaces as possible. Obviously, we had our bond development steering committee, what's met every two weeks, really planning things out. We had listening sessions, you had site council outreach, we had, you know, specific fields and grounds committees, and everyone trying to bring in as many voices as possible into the process. Why we were developing the bond was crucial because we had a lot of conversations about the what, and how much, and all that. And that, this input from people outside of the folks around this table or in the leadership was crucial because it was important to get the package right as much as it was to, you know, pass it. And then, of course, we did like bond surveys and our outreach and our community engagement. And this is all before we even put it on the ballot. And getting that part right was really important, and you should be commended for that. Next step, next slide.
So our communication strategy, we kind of did a multi-phase communication strategy, and Jeremy, you can jump in anytime, but we did in-depth training for our staff, and we kind of communicated with them right at the beginning of the year. And we had that lovely first-of-the-year kickoff where we were able to capture all of our staff and communicate with them, as well as giving some more pointed communication with our principals and leaders. We did a lot of community outreach and events. We started in July and continued on all the way through the end of October, attending events and trying to connect with as many or as much of our community as we possibly could and have those conversations and answer questions and provide as much information as possible. We also sent out some parent materials through our Parents Square, our social media, our website. We did a direct campaign mailer to all of our voters, and again, we really utilized our digital and social media assets to kind of communicate what our, what we were doing, what we were asking.
Yeah, I would just say the leadership of the district should be commended for investing in these things, you know, whether it's printed materials, direct mail, three pieces. We'll show that in a minute, but that takes commitment, that takes, that's real important work and important, you know, should be commended. All right, go ahead, Caitlin.
Yeah. So our informational campaign efforts, like I said, we really attended as many events as we could. We had over 40-plus events that we attended with district leadership, as well as some of our board members. We had over 2,500 general flyers shared, as well as school-specific flyers shared to the school-specific communities. 1,600 event cards were printed and shared out, 600 bookmarks were distributed at key locations like the library, some of our more pediatric and parent-oriented areas. We sent out principal letters, 24 posters were displayed at all schools, vertical banners, social media posts, the list is there. We kind of covered this in the last board meeting, but we really wanted to make sure that we hit as many different forms and as many different places with our information to make sure that voters were informed.
Yeah, and just a reminder, this is all informational campaign. This was, you know, just the facts. This is the, you know, the district factual information that was cleared, the Secretary of State language.
So this is a list of events that we attended, anywhere from Oregon City's First City Celebration downtown to some of the smaller, more local, like the Optimist Club, Rotary Club, and then our school-specific locations. This is an example of the bookmarks and the postmarks that were shared. We shared them downtown, in the library, the hospital area, Midtown Freddy's, kind of like everywhere that Oregon City kind of touches, we tried to get our information out there in some form.
Bookmarks were my favorite.
Yeah, bookmarks are cute. We did social media posts. We did some general, we did some school-specific. We shared them on all of our channels just to, again, make sure that we were informing as many people as possible.
Yeah, and, you know, we did some paid digital ads over the 30-second or 45-second, depending on the medium, social media versus pre-roll. And pre-roll, just so you know, is that the thing you have to watch before you can watch the thing you want to watch that you hate and you skip at 15 or 30 seconds, but can be very effective. So we had 15-second versions, right? That was just, here are the five things to know, real quick. And so we had 500,000 impressions. We had the video completion rate, meaning they watched the full 30 seconds, about 46%, which is great. And then we did the connected TV, which is, you know, you're Roku, you are those things where you Hulu and all those. And those people have to watch the whole thing, which is why you pay for that. And so those 225,000 impressions. So what we're presenting here is that there's a lot of information right now, and you're thinking about a, you know, a margin of under 500 votes, victory, these are the margins that make the difference.
Yep. And finally, we sent out some physical mailers to every voting household. So not every registered voter, but every household. So there might have been multiple registered voters in one household. So three different kinds, one of them that was like very more in-depth, had a lot of detailed information, a second one that was more high-level with a letter from our board members, and then just a kind of a reminder with the noted points.
Yes, again, we're just using multiple material, putting out the same message over and over again in different places. Five things to know, mailer, digital ad, TV ad, like you're trying to capture that repetition. That was the goal.
So the path ahead, what are we going to do now? It's really important for us to continue communicating with our community and make sure that they are informed every step of the way. So our opportunity is that our bond has passed, and I'm super excited for this opportunity to get to share all of our updates and the progress that we're making on our repairs to our elementary schools, the expansion of our CTE spaces, and the updates to our fields and grounds. So the audience, of course, is our Oregon City community, as well as parents, staff members, and, you know, people who are looking to income into Oregon City. The three main goals are to celebrate our community and their support, as well as the benefits and the wonderful things that we are getting with this bond, as well as demonstrate the impacts on learning and the learning environments that this bond is going to have, as well as hopefully build trust with our transparent communication on our funds and fund spending.
Yeah, I just want to pause here just because this is important. As we talk about the next steps in communications around bonds, you know, one of the things that happens, you know, we do a lot of work to pass bonds, and then we also work with clients after they've passed bonds, and we do communication strategies and kind of help them along the way. And one of the things that happens sometimes, you get so into, okay, we gotta build this, we gotta remodel these elementary schools, we gotta do this, we gotta do that, and you get really focused in terms of a construction-focused calendar and project schedule, and we gotta hit these, that we forget the important thing is that we have to tell people what we're doing with their money. And the other part is, and we saw this in Gresham Borough, so in 2016, very similar, we won, they had 48,000 votes cast, and we won by 600 votes, right? And there were 800 votes, and that was almost a $2 increase, maybe slightly over $2 from zero. Okay? So very significant increase. And what we realized is that in that first year, and you all have passed, you know, a significant increase, you know, to the tax rolls. We know this, right? And you should be commended, if you look at everything that passed, you were the ones with the increase, right? But with that challenge, that awesome comes up, you know, the challenge, which is that people next November are gonna get the tax bill, right? And they're gonna see that increase. And they're gonna say, oh, what's happening here? Did I voted for this? Oh, I did, I don't remember. They won't remember. You'll be amazed. We do focus groups, and we ask people two weeks after election what they voted, and they don't have any clue. So your goal as Oregon City School District between now and when next November, or whenever those things hit their roles, they get their, you know, their tax bill with the increase, is to start clearly and concisely communicating what you are doing and how you're doing and how you're gonna spend their money. Because the challenge right now is gonna be, there's always a delay, right? Because you have to, there's a construction process, and there's the development process, and there's all this stuff that happens behind the scenes, and then you're like, and then, so it's hard to show, you're not showing a new school, like Gardner, right? That took years to build Gardner, you know, and actually open the school. And so our challenge is communications, and as a district and as a board, is thinking about what are the opportunities, what is our, you know, what is, what are some of the stories we- stories we can tell, what are some of the process stories we can tell, all those things, that storytelling becomes really important because you want to keep people with you. You want to keep them on, like, excited about what you're doing and patient. And especially with parents who are going to think, oh, why isn't my elementary school, why don't I have HVAC yet, right? That communication about schedule and timing and storytelling around it is absolutely crucial and I can't emphasize that enough.
Exactly. So how are we going to tell that story? We are going, we already have a dedicated website that I will continue to update. Each school will have updates for itself, but we will also have district-wide updates that are included in there, photos, videos, anything that you could possibly want will be housed on that website. We will also be sending out Parent Square newsletters and information, which is our official communication platform with parents. And we also have the opportunity to share it with community members if they sign up for the community group. We have principal newsletters, our district newsletters and our bond-specific posts that we will be having. We will also be posting on our school and district's social media channels and that's anywhere from Facebook, Instagram, some of our LinkedIn on the district and then our YouTube channels. And so we're really excited about that. And then we will be possibly hosting in-person events at the big reveals and the ribbon cuttings and then physical mailers. So my goal is to send out at least twice a year a physical mailer to each household with bond information update so that those who are not tuned into all of our other channels at least are getting that information as well. And then we have our Citizen Bond Oversight Committee, which we're excited about and are now accepting applications. If you're interested in being a part of our Citizen Bond Oversight Committee, please apply. The application is on the bond website, ocschoolbond.org, and we'll be accepting those applications until January 3rd. I will have dedicated branding for all of our bond information so that you know that it's bond information coming directly from us. There's the bond logo that I have proposed. These are the icons that we have already been using for those three buckets, those big buckets that we have on our bond package as well as some of the colors. And we will have a project dashboard. This project dashboard is super exciting. I have it on every single school and as well as our CTE spaces and our fields and grounds. This will be updated in real time. So on this dashboard, you can see the, the budget of the project, you can see the project development progress. That little circle will change color as the percentage changes. You have our expected completion date as well as a proposed calendar on when and how the bond projects will be shaping up.
Just on this, you know, we managed for five years after Gresham Borough passed its bond and finally completed it in 2021 and it was $331 million projects. We did this and the project update page became a living history of the bond, the projects themselves. And so you could go back and it's, it's, and look at the, from the very beginning, all the updates, the photos and becomes a repository of your bond program. So that, one of the things always happens is like, what, what happened to the last bond, you know, what, and having this level of detail is crucial because it gives you a, a history, one that you can reference. And I strongly encourage this is best practice.
You know, we in Oregon City, we love our history. We're celebrating 150 years right now and I'm digging into that history like nobody's business. So one of the things I talked about was our Citizen Bond Oversight Committee. Like I said, our applications are being accepted right now. I think we're looking for between 15 to 20 community, or committee members from various perspectives. We'll meet monthly in the beginning for about an hour, hour and a half, depending, the timing and the frequency of those meetings might change depending on the needs. If we need more, we'll have more. If we need less, we'll have less. And that will be decided by the committee. But our application deadline is January 3rd, 2025. So please apply if you are interested. Again, you can learn more on our bond website and if there's any questions, I'm curious to hear them.
Thank you so much. Board, do you have any questions?
I would just like to say thank you, Jeremy. We haven't talked since the week of the election after talking a lot. It has been a super long process and everyone has worked really hard, but we really appreciate the work that you've put into this and the success we will, we're able to kind of eke out. And I'm very excited about what's to come. I really think this is going to have a generational, generational impact on kids in this district. And this is not something that we can take lightly and it's not something we can do all the time. So I really, the impact of this, I really think can't be measured yet and I'm very excited to see what we're going to do, but I want to thank you and Caitlin and everybody that has taken their time to really get the vote out and, and get this done. So thank you.
Thank you. I would be remiss, my team, Bright Public Affairs, Kelly Jenkins and Donna and Lindsay, our whole crew was behind the scenes, working with Caitlin all the time and so, that's one. It's a team.
It's fantastic. Anyone else?
I just want to say thank you as well and I'm excited about all this communication that's going to follow and show the progress. I'm like thinking I could, as, as a contractor myself, I could put this little dashboard and, and help my, my clients. But it, it does take time to get things off the ground. People don't understand, all of a sudden people, I work here and oh, we're going to get HVAC next year. I'm like, oh, wait a minute, we got to go to design, architect drawings. If we're moving walls, we're going to have to, there's, it's a complicated process. So be patient, it's going to happen and you're going to get updates and it'll, it'll get done, but it's not, Rome wasn't built in a day and neither was Oregon City School District. It took 150 years to build it right now. So we're going to get it down, we're going to be great stewards of the money and I love that we're going to be super transparent because in any of those naysayers that were complaining, I encourage you to put your name in for the Oversight Committee. We want diversity and a lot of different opinions in there. And if you had doubts and if you maybe vote no for it, we'd like to see you on that committee and make sure we're transparent spending the money. So, and can board members be on that or is that just citizens?
It's your committee that reports to you.
Okay, they're reports to us.
Yeah.
Okay. And will this committee, because the bond's going to, the, the life of this bond will be for a few years, will that, this committee be that committee for that whole time?
Yes.
Outstanding. All right, I don't want to scare anybody off, but.
It's kind of why we're going to 15 to 20 because you have people that move and people that have other life challenges that can't stay. So, you know, you hope for at least a dozen over time.
Outstanding.
And there are going to be plenty of committees you can be on, so.
But I kind of like construction. And then just a shout out to the board members and the staff that we spent time in different events, all of us, and got to have community engagement. I love community engagement and I think it's, it's what makes our community special. So thanks to all the board members for getting out there and getting the word out.
Well, thank you. This was a community effort to pass this bond and the informational campaign that the district and Jeremy, your team helped lead was fantastic and really the, the cornerstone and the information that was shared out, we couldn't have done it without all of that hard work and your guidance. So thank you so much. I really appreciate it. And Caitlin, fantastic work. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I did have, oh, a question around just intentionally including individuals and that, what's the process of people that apply and how they're accepted into the Oversight Committee?
Yeah, I think it's, it's very similar to how we've navigated a lot of our other committees is that we look at them and we try and find as many perspectives as we can and kind of sort out the different perspectives and try and get one from each one that we have apply. Do you want to add more to that, Dale?
I think one of the things that's helped us in the past is we ask the committee members what they'll bring to the committee because they know themselves best and the different perspectives, what they're hoping to get out of it, what they have as a history that they bring to the committee and what they're hoping to contribute. So we sort of let them drive the work. So for example, if we have five people that say, I already work in the construction field, probably don't need all five of them, but maybe one or two, and then look for other perspectives and experiences for people to bring.
I look forward to seeing how we partner with the college and how they pass their bond and how there could be some synergy going on with, with those, both of those bonds.
Yeah, absolutely. Really good opportunity there. Well, thank you all for your kind words.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too. Moving on, we are going to learn more about our early literacy grant with Dr. Crane.
And I am again going to pass it off to Candace Hinkin, say your name correctly, our K-12 literacy specialist.
Thank you, Candace.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I get to be the literacy specialist for the district, so pretty wonderful job. And we've got a slide deck. I'm going to tell you all about the early literacy grant. We are in year two of that. We're awarded about $500,000 annually for that and again, year two. So I got to come into this position, I want to say it was about February last year, and begin this work. The early literacy grant has five, like, big allowable expenses. And so I'll go into those in more depth, but they're high dose tutoring, extended learning, professional development, curricula and at-home reading. And it's really specific to K-3 is where all of the focus is. There's a little bit of allowable expenses for fourth and fifth grade, but it's very minimal. It's really targeted to getting all of our students to be readers because we know if they're reading by the end of third grade, then they are on a trajectory of success. And I say it often, but just so you know, literacy is a health determinant. So students or people that have the functional literacy skills, they live a longer life. And so I have an important job to do. Our teachers have an important job and we get to do that with the support of the early literacy grant. When I talk about literacy, I think the most important thing we start with is our core district adopted materials and that is Wonders and Maravias. And we are in year three of that and our teachers are amazing. Wonders is, Wonders and Maravias is a comprehensive literacy curriculum. It has more materials than we will ever be able to teach in a given school year. And so really what our teachers need to know is how to select the right materials at the right time for their students. And then that's some of the learning we're doing together. So new learning that, that we're coming out of the science of reading is, for instance, rhyming. We think that's a very important thing that we do a lot of in kindergarten. It's actually not foundational for kids to become good readers. It's really great engagement and fun practice, but you're not going to become a good reader if, if you can't rhyme. So rhyming's not a core piece. So, and therefore, when we're looking at our core materials, we're not going to spend as much explicit instruction on rhyming, but we will do rhyming activities and have fun with kids with, with oral language. So we're really looking at our materials and how we use them and what's the best way and then really making sure all of our students are in grade-level text and beyond. They, when their teachers are reading to them, they're reading a great text that is above grade level, so they're having those rich discussions and hearing the great literature that happens. But then our students are also in grade-level text and we're really focused on that. All right, one of the next ones is high dose tutoring and the state has defined that for us and what that means. And essentially that means it's a very small group, one to two, one to three at the very most, three days a week, 30-minute sessions. We have partnered with an organization called Reading Results to provide high dose tutoring at two of our sites, Gaffney Lane in Redland, and we are serving about 25 students at each of those sites. Here's what I think's really cool about high dose tutoring is, one, they are employing tutors from in our community. So I was onsite the other day and one of them, one of the tutors is a parent that their child goes to the school. And this works as a perfect job for that parent. They're getting the, the training so that they can be really successful with a very structured curriculum. And then I think the other thing that's really beneficial about partnering with Reading Results is those tutors, they can only tutor. They don't go do recess duty, they can't be pulled for other things, they are tutoring. So students are getting that tutoring and following that schedule very consistently, which is fantastic. We just started that towards the very beginning of October, so we're watching and monitoring progress and I'll talk to you a little bit more about data in a little bit. We have a high focus on our foundational literacy. And what this basically means is what kids need to know to re-text. That's foundational literacy. And we have brought in a supplemental curriculum called UFLY. It's out of the University of Florida. It's very systematic and, and complements our curriculum well. We've trained about 70 staff members so far and we've done this mainly through an optional PD format. So staff that are seeing that this is a need for their students, they're coming, they're being compensated and then they're getting support in implementing that. One of the cool learnings from this is the importance of articulatory gestures. See, I get to say fun things, articulatory gestures. But that is basically the way your mouth moves when it says a letter sound and knowing that really explicitly helps you become a better reader. And I think, and after, you know, post-pandemic, we really see an importance of that. But even our speech and language pathologists are saying, yes, this will help all of our kids. For some kids, it's super critical, but it will help all of them. And that's embedded within the new curriculum that we're using as well. I talked to you last year about AMIRA. AMIRA is an online-based reading micro-intervention and students are reading text to a computer, it's artificial intelligence, and then getting quick, in-the-moment feedback about that. And so they're called micro-interventions, they're really tiny, quick, and it's really helpful for kids to build their reading fluency. This is two stories a day, every day. It's about a total of 30 minutes a week that students would be interacting on AMIRA and we are watching our kids grow in their, their oral reading skills. What's really cool about this is they're getting miles on the tongue. So we know that kids become better readers by practicing reading. They have to read words. And AMIRA really has a high accountability for doing that and so they're getting lots of practice. And then this is one of my favorite things. I get to do a lot of professional development. I get to learn alongside our educators and that's looking, that looks, comes up in a variety of ways. So I have some examples up there of learning walks onsite where we're really looking at the practices happening in the classroom and highlighting how those teachers are using their resources, the quick and important decisions they're making that are really supportive of kids' learning. We're doing optional professional development on really like concrete, specific tasks like how to teach high-frequency words. And staff are coming and being compensated on, to do that and then leaving with how to use those materials right in their classroom. I've also started doing a literacy podcast. I call it Literacy's Everywhere because guess what? Literacy's everywhere. They're two to three minutes and I just talk about an instructional practice that is helpful at all grade levels. And then last, Holcomb Elementary School is a part of a demonstration network and so they are a part of a small network of 13 schools across the state that are learning about early literacy together and really focusing in on their practices in the classroom. So lots of really intentional professional development that's happening focused on early literacy. And what's next? I think one of the things that I love about my job is I get to be really laser-light focused on literacy. So, you know, probably said it 100 times, literacy's everywhere, but what does that mean in practice? What does that look like in all of our classrooms and how do we make that really clear and what that is? That's the work we continue, we'll continue to do together. We are, have been able to hire a literacy TOSA to help support the work, who'll be focused just K-3. I get the privilege of working K-12. This person will support K-3 and particularly foundational literacy skills to begin with. And they'll start with us in probably about February. So that will help that onsite professional development. One of the things we've really had trouble with is getting enough subs to release teachers from the classroom to do learning. So we are just going to go right onsite and be alongside them. More professional development, we still have more stuff we're doing. And then data analysis and progress monitoring, spending a lot of And then data analysis and progress monitoring, spending a lot of time with our instructional leaders, whether they're administrators or our coaches, and looking at data, our teachers too, looking at data, what is our data telling us? And do, how are we responding to that data? Really specifically, what do kids need to know to be able to be really successful in literacy? We just started a program. We're calling Book Buddies. It launched at Redland this week. We are connecting volunteers with first graders to read books. And that has been really successful start to it. And then we're going to move to other schools as well. And then we are looking to renew the grant so we can continue the work because we see the outcomes of what's happening with early literacy through this. And so we're really looking forward to what our next steps will be. Now we can go on. That's it. Any questions?
Yep. One of the allowable uses was at-home reading. So what does that look like now? Or what are the plans?
Right. It's one of the pieces we've looked at, and I think over the, I think the course of the pandemic kind of changed how we were approaching at-home reading. And one of the strategies we took this summer was the community pop-ups to kind of go out into the community. We're talking about what that could look like over the breaks to kind of support that. But we also have some online resources that families can tap into. So AMIRA, as I talked about earlier, families can access that at home and would highly encourage it. And then they have access to books also, like Tumble Books and things like that, all through Kids Class Links, and kids know how to connect to those.
Kind of big, so community partner-wise, what is that?
Community partner-wise?
Yeah.
Yeah. We were working with a partnership with the library for the summer. I think we can enhance that a lot more than we were able to this last summer and further kind of partner with them because while they have a great resource of all the books at the library and are just really excited to work with us.
Since Chromebooks are not being brought home anymore, how are they able to connect to AMIRA?
Yeah. That would be home devices, but I am positive that if a family reached out to the school and said, hey, is there a device we can use over the break? They would absolutely find a way to loan them a device. The schools are really great at being flexible in resources.
I have a couple of questions to start with. So, when we renew the grant?
When we do.
Exactly. Will we be able to expand the, kind of, the high-dose tutoring to the other elementary schools? Or are we staying focused at Gaffney and Redland?
We're going to monitor our progress on that. So we want to make data-informed decisions. It's really early. We just watched our first round of progress monitoring, which told me we need a little bit more data to know for sure that this is going to be the most effective use. But it seems like a really promising practice and one that we could look expanding at other sites.
And then if you could talk a little bit more about kind of the success you're seeing with AMIRA, because what I hear about AMIRA is from my 4th grader who does not care for it. But I know that there are a lot of kids who are having success with it. So if you could talk a little bit more about that, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely.
If for no other reason than I could tell him that.
Yes. Well, so I think one of the things that I have, that students have reported as far as a frustration of AMIRA is that AMIRA gives feedback. And sometimes we think that feedback only comes because we've made a mistake. But actually, if I read with AMIRA, AMIRA's going to give me feedback because there are reading skills and concepts that are so important that even if I got them right, I could practice them more. And students sometimes get really frustrated by that. They're like, you didn't hear me correctly. Yes, yeah. But actually, she heard them correctly and just wants them to continue to practice. Sometimes there is some like adjusting of mics and things that we can do to help if there is any kind of connectivity things, but those are all workarounds that are pretty easy. Other students love AMIRA because they are getting that feedback right away. And it feels more interactive than some of the other online platforms where kids might be reading but not getting any kind of feedback on how that reading's going. They have been adapting the program, so there's some comprehension questions that are asked now that weren't the year prior to kind of really help reinforce that reading is for purpose and not for just, you know, just for the sake of reading words, but for gaining meaning. And so the program is developing too. But what I hear from kids that love it is they like the feedback right away. It feels super interactive.
Candace has also spent some time working with schools to make sure we know who should be doing AMIRA. And it's not just a blanket, everybody does AMIRA for this much time every day, but really like targeting students who would benefit most from it.
And is AMIRA available? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'd say we're trying to be really thoughtful about how we use our resources and who we use them with and who they're going to be most effective with. And we learned from our implementation a little bit more about who those kiddos are so that we can be really specific. That's a good point.
And is AMIRA available in Spanish so that kids that told us anything are able to use it?
Yes, it is. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. It is available in Spanish. One of the things that we don't love about AMIRA is that kids get to pick the language. We can't force the language, but we can absolutely reaffirm making great choices in the language that they, we want them to be practicing. Yeah. And students at other schools can use it in Spanish if their instructional team thinks that that's a good use of their time too.
I just have a quick one. With all of the summer learning loss, are any of these programs going to be able to be pulled through summer? Are we even looking at that for summer?
Absolutely. And I get to do summer school again, which is so fun. It's a, it's a great time. So we'll be looking at what that offering's going to be like and how we expand that. So those of you listening and you're wondering, what are you going to do this summer? You might want to hang out with Candace Hinkin and some amazing children at Gardner Middle School and do some summer school.
Thank you, Candace, so much. We really appreciate it. Moving on to behavioral supports.
You might notice that Ms. Berg is not here tonight. She's ill. So Mr. Willis and I are gonna... We got this.
We got this. Hello, everyone.
So, oh, you can go to the next slide, please. I want you to start here in the middle where you can't see. There's 2 boxes missing on your end. But what we really want for students is to experience a sense of belonging, which is the middle square, if you could see it. And we know that we do that both through supporting students with academics and supporting students with any lagging skills, oh, there we go, in behavior that they need, right? And so we have ways that we do that, and we wanted to share that with you. So we do have multi-tiered system of support. You can go to the next slide. And my understanding is you all have heard about this before, often called MTSS. But essentially, it's really what it says it is. We have multiple tiers that support students, and we do that in a systematic way so we ensure that all students are getting the support that they need. Again, both with academics and with lagging skills that might exist for behavior. And so we know that we have PBIS or Positive Behavior Interventions and Support. We have our intervention teams. We look at attendance. We look at problem solving. And we always use data to make these decisions and have team meetings for students. Next slide. You've also heard about, I think you can click, click, so we see all 3 right now. Thank you. So you, again, I think you've had training or information given to you on Positive Behavior Intervention and Support, or PBIS. Back in the old days, it was called PBS, and that didn't work. Some of you remember that. I see it on your face. So we have PBIS, and we know that we need a three-pronged approach to that. We need systems that support adult behavior. We need practices that support student behavior. And then we need data that supports decision-making. And we just want to make sure that we have good systems to do that. You might know that Sean Fletcher was our PBIS person, contact, key person. And he's now at Redland. And so we have Kate Bonia and Jennifer Bell working to continue to support our PBIS chairs at every school so that that continues. And I think you might have seen in our strategic plan, a report out last month that indeed everybody has their expectations out and are teaching those, et cetera. So the next thing, sometimes when we do behavior presentations, we have this moment called a mandatory pyramid moment. So here you go. And the reason we have this, this is actually based on some, a lot of research that shows that if, with any given population, whether it be schools or hospital staff or construction workers probably, students at your, kids at your preschool, you're going to have, most kids, 80% of the kids are going to be just fine with what you normally do every single day, your universal tier-one supports. Some kids or adults are going to need some more interventions in addition to the green zone or the universal supports. And then a very small amount of adults or students in the system are going to need even more intervention. And so this stacks. It's important to know that everybody gets green. Some also get yellow, and some also get red. It's not an either-or. So as you, the next slide basically says the same thing with words. Oh, my. I'm just going to say Ms. Berg really went for it with these slides. That's pretty great. But it basically says exactly what I just said, right? That you get all of it. So it's important to note that the intensity of supports and services obviously goes up as you need more, right? If the universal tier-one supports are not working, aren't enough for either academics, then we're talking about some AMIRA things, or we're talking about some interventions like Candace was just talking about. But the same is true for behavior. We're teachers, and so we teach kids. And if they come in with lagging skills and academics, we do interventions, and the same thing is true for behaviors. And so we really want to support kids in learning the skills that will help them be successful young people and adults someday. And that means sometimes we're teaching behavior. It's important to note that as these, the intensity of services and supports goes up, we have meetings with people. And so this, these meetings would include a general education teacher, often a specialist, a principal, or a vice principal, or a dean, sometimes a school psychologist, sometimes, you know, et cetera. So we try to get lots of different people around the room. It's one of those things that sometimes when you're in the middle of it every day, you can't see really good ideas, even though you might know them. But you can't think of them in that moment. I'm sure maybe as a parent, you've had that moment. I have. And so it's nice to get, you get a number of people around the table. And we make sure that if we're creating something that's a behavior support that really needs to be written down, and we really need to think through what we need to do, we do what's called a functional behavior assessment. And sometimes that's an informal, we just want to figure out, why do we think this behavior's happening? What do we think the lagging skill is? And then based on that, what are we as the adults in the system going to do differently to support the child and then to teach the child? So some of the, you might be asking yourself, you know, if I'm a teacher and I have a student who comes to me with some unexpected behaviors, what, how would I know what to do about that, right? And so there's a lot of ways. And a lot of it, I'm actually going to stop at the bottom, or start at the bottom, is that just in time training? You know, you get a, we, sometimes students come in and we didn't know they were moving into the area, and we don't know anything about them. And all of a sudden, there's some unexpected behaviors or some dysregulation. It may be because they just moved. But, right, that's when we work with our teams to say, ooh, okay, this was unexpected. How are we going to deal with this? Or how are we going to support this? How are we going to teach a new behavior? And so it's really important that we are, maybe not constantly, but very frequently communicating with a school team for a student. We also collaborate with specialists. We, we're collaborating here, although I'm doing all the talking, sorry. In a minute, you'll get to hear from Mr. Willis. We have people come in and watch. Part of that functional behavior assessment is to watch and say, what's, what's happening? What's happening right before the student maybe is dysregulated? What's, what's the adult doing? What are the other kids doing? And how can we, like, you know, an outside observer can help with that. And then what ideas can you give to the teacher? We have, obviously, we have our annual vector trainings that we do, and some of that is on just behavior, general behavior ideas. And actually, in our teacher training school, we have it. Heidi's nodding because we did take those classes. Those classes become reality when you do your student teaching. And you go, oh, in the book, it said to do this, this. That did not work. Okay, how about I do this and that? And so you can, you know, we really learn a lot on the job, but we also learn from each other in our teams. We have grade-level teams. We have, you know, teachers, we say, gosh, this student's doing this thing, and I've never seen that before. Have you ever dealt with that before? Oh, yeah, this thing worked last year. And so we would count on each other to, in those situations. Making sure I got all my notes. Okay. Then, of course, when we have students who are eligible for special education, we also have IEP meetings, Individualized Education Plan meetings, which happen annually and/or as needed. Well, not or, and as needed. And so those, again, are parents at the table, gen ed teacher specialists, and we're just making sure that we have all the information we need to make a good plan for our student to be successful. At the end of the day, sometimes people, when we do behavior trainings, you can go to the next slide, they say, well, that means you don't have any consequences. All you do is teach for behavior, and you have no consequences. And so we did want to assure you that based on board policy, based on law, of course, we have a code of conduct that we do follow. And teaching kids doesn't mean that we don't also sometimes have consequences. Those happen, and we work within our code of conduct to make sure that we're following the rules, the policies, the laws, and also being, helping students learn also, so that we don't just say, that's it, you have a consequence. But we're also trying to make sure that kids are getting the support they need to do it differently the next time.
Okay. Forgot to introduce myself. I'm Aaron Willis. I'm the Associate Director of Student Services. It's okay. I throw my pen at you for not introducing me. So I'll talk real briefly about, this is obviously a collaboration amongst all the departments in the district, but Student Services in particular can step in in supporting the use of restraint or seclusion when behaviors become so intense or escalated that that level of support is needed. And then I'll just go over very briefly some recent-ish Senate bills, as well as kind of the process that we follow in the district in supporting instances that result in that. So ODE's definition of restraint and seclusion is right there. I won't read that verbatim, but ultimately restraint comes down to kind of the restriction of a student's movement or action. And it is a wide spectrum, anything from, if I were holding a student's hand walking back from the playground and they stop and tug, if I'm still holding, that would be considered a restraint, all the way to the much more extreme one would be a student running out into perhaps the street or something where there's traffic. I'm going to grab that student, right, to keep them safe, still considered a restraint. Seclusion, in a nutshell, is confinement of a student in a room by themselves, which the OARs around seclusion have very specific parameters around what does and does not qualify or constitute a seclusion room. In Oregon City, it is not a practice that we condone. And so when we go through all of our trainings, we try to make that very clear that we don't have, we don't have the rooms to do it anyway. You see those more typically in like therapeutic or residential-type settings where they have the right spaces for it. Next slide. Just a few Senate bills I want to briefly touch on, all of which were passed, I think, within the last year or 2, that expand kind of protections for students when it comes to the use of restraint or seclusion. Senate Bill 1024 does 2 things in practice. 1, if there is a video recording of the use of a restraint or seclusion, the video would never be tampered with, 1, but 2, that that video would be made available to the parent or guardian within a very reasonable amount of time. I want to say it's within 24 hours to come in and view. And then Senate Bill 790 expanded the child abuse investigations in particular. It now includes unlawful restraints or seclusions as part of child abuse investigations. So there's an extension of DHS called OTUS, for the Office of Training Investigations and Safety, that can step in and may do an investigation if they are made aware of an unlawful use of a restraint or seclusion. And really, what 790 also says is that districts need to be partnering and participating with OTUS when those investigations do take place. I think it's important to note that, at least in our district, we have a debrief process that we go through if there ever is an instance of restraining a student, where we would go through in collaboration with the family to review what led up to the use of the restraint. What do we need to do to mitigate the likelihood of that needing to happen again? But when we are made aware that OTUS is doing an investigation, we need to pause any further action while they conduct their investigation. And so I alluded to this just a moment ago, but at least in, for us as a district, some of our practice around this in equipping staff with pretty intensive training on how to respond to those intense behaviors, we've, we use a program called CPI or the Crisis Prevention Institute. Some of you may be familiar with that, but it's one of the few Some of you may be familiar with that, but it's one of the few state-approved de-escalation programs or curricula that is made available. It's a, it's an intensive course. It involves about three or four hours of just online training, but then there's an all-day training that is led by one of our in-district CPI trainers. And that's something that staff have to refresh every two years. Just real briefly, CPI spends about 90% of the information is really around verbal de-escalation and other safety interventions, things that staff can do. And then a very small percentage of that training is around the physical restraint, if necessary. Again, the, the really simple, easy examples are stopping a child from doing something that is going to imminently put them in danger or others in danger. But it does also get into some of the more nuanced situations where, you know, the use of restraint may be necessary, again, to prevent that imminent threat of harm to self or others. And then we were also, this isn't on this slide, but you can go to the next one. We, we also have been taking advantage of another senate bill. I think it was 283 that gave us some, some funding to increase the number of CPI trainers that we have in the district. So for a long time, we, we had one, and she's amazing, she still is amazing, Kelly Sappi, but we've been able to increase that to about four trainers now in the district, which is awesome because we're able to then provide more opportunities for staff to go and do that training. And so I think 283 also laid out a goal of having a ratio of one trained staff member, not trainer, but trained staff to every 50 students. Right now, we have 177 staff that have like an active, they're certified to provide, to, to jump in. And that includes at least one building administrator in every building, a great many of our special education teachers, instructional assistants, as well as deans of students and then other support staff. But like I said, with the increase of trainers where we would certainly love to see that number, I mean, jump up like quite a bit. Because again, while the, the restraint piece is important, so much of that training, and I think anyone that's taken the CPI course would, would attest, all of those de-escalation techniques, it's just good practice in general for, for any student who is experiencing any sort of behavioral dysregulation, even if it doesn't ever escalate to the point where they would need to step in and physically intervene. And then, so another thing that Dr. Crane and Director Berg and I have been doing as we were kind of reviewing a lot of the senate bills and all of these pieces, it felt like information that was, was pertinent such that this, this should be more than an email. So we have been going to every school to provide some of this training and a lot of the information we are giving you tonight is, is kind of mirrors that information that we're giving to staff. And so we're sharing that information, but it's also, I'll be honest, it can be kind of scary information to receive as a teacher when we're hearing about the expansion of, of child abuse investigations and stuff like that. So we're also trying to make sure that that's partnered with, here's a set of tools, many of which are pulled from CPI and/or just good behavioral intervention practices. Coupling that with to just sitting and listening and hearing where staff are feeling this is a gap in my knowledge or my skillset, here's something, I feel like Dr. Crane and Aaron have talked about ad nauseam, I don't need to talk about that anymore. So we can really tailor future professional development for staff based on that feedback that we're getting directly from them. Make sure I got everything in that slide. Yeah. Okay. And then the last one, it seems a little out of place. I probably should have gone back to what Dr. Crane was talking about in terms of the code of conduct, but just a brief mention about suspension, in particular at the elementary level. The code of conduct tries to pull directly from some of the OARs around when suspension is not only appropriate, but when a building administrator can actually suspend a student at the elementary level. And, and really, it comes down to about two, one of two things has happened, that there is, there has been non-accidental contact causing like significant injury. Typically, that threshold is like someone needing medical attention as a result of that non-accidental contact, or when it's required by law. So weapons, drugs, some of those areas. We know that if it is a student who receives services on an IEP, that if they're not in school, that means that they're not getting that specially designed instruction, which very well may be in the behavioral or social emotional piece. So that's always a struggle. I think building administrators are having to kind of weigh those decisions when deciding whether or not suspension's appropriate. There was also a, I think it might have come out of an OAR or a senate bill, I think it was a senate bill, around what's called informal removals. I think there's, there can be a tendency to call a parent and say so-and-so is having a bad day today, and then maybe the parent comes and decides that they want to take their, their student home. For the sake of, of protecting a student, particularly a student who's on an IEP or a 504, it's important that we're documenting those as suspensions because there are procedural safeguards and other due process things that kick into play when a student on an IEP or a 504 is suspended for 10 days or more. So we want to be extra cautious when those informal removals happen because we also don't want to miss a step on making sure that those safeguards are, are being honored when appropriate. And then that last bullet point addresses that even further. Technically, we're talking about changing a student's placement when they've been suspended 10, 10 or more days. So that, that's really a trigger, like, we really need to sit down and talk about how we're, how we're meeting this child's needs and keeping them and everyone else safe. I think those are our slides. What questions can Dr. Crane answer for you?
Ford? Questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd have a couple around. One was, so some of changes to especially the elementary schools and this, and the staffing as far as the deans of, of students and the rest and return rooms, is there even anecdotal information right now about how that's being implemented and?
It's something I've been spending some time thinking about, as we get ready for our integrated grant application that's coming up, because we do have to make decisions about if that, if our theory of action for those positions was a good one, or, you know, if this is good use of our dollars. And I think rest and return room, I feel really good about. I, I know that they're being used. I know that students are in there. I've been, I've seen kids calming in there and learning strategies to calm themselves in classes, because that's the hope, right? That they take that skill with them to different settings. And then our deans are doing great. I've been meeting with them monthly with Ms. Norman and we're really just talking about how we do all these things, right? Support kids, teach kids, make sure we're not just like, we don't have anything else to do, so we're, we guess we'll suspend, you know, talking through how we can support. And they're really a good support to each other. At our last meeting, they really brainstormed, you know, I have this one thing that's going on and I'm not really sure. And then someone go, ooh, I did, I had that last, you know, last two month or whatever, and I'm doing this. And so really getting them together to brainstorm together has been good. But they're doing great work and I think that they're always busy, that's for sure. I don't know if you want to add any?
Yeah, the only thing I'd add to the rest and return rooms is that they, they also, they serve other purposes too, which is nice. So for many students, it's kind of that soft landing where they start their day, where they just get that nice check-in with a, a safe or trusted adult. So not even a place where they can go and take a break, but just, it's like they know that there's going to be kind of one of their people in there to start the day or end their day. So anecdotally, I think the rest and return room is a fantastic resource, for sure.
And I will say, we've asked for the data from all of those, just, just today, we asked for that, so that we really can be analyzing. But how many kids are coming? How often are they coming? How long are they staying? All of those things.
And some buildings will also even, are tracking where, like what zone were you in? Were you in kind of a yellow zone when you entered? Are you in a green zone as you're leaving to see? Are we actually seeing students being able to regulate before they re-enter their class?
And then we talk about universal supports, the social emotional learning and that curriculum is, is a key piece. Where are we at in kind of that process of?
Yeah, yeah. So we have second steps as a curriculum that people can use in morning meetings or counselors can use for certain lessons that they prefer that curriculum for. However, really what we're going for is embedding social emotional learning in what is happening every day, day-to-day. And so one of the things that Kate Bonilla is doing, the Associate Director of Behavioral Health and Wellness, who's running a lot of the T cell and the PBIS things, she's really going out and, and finding the spots where people are doing social emotional learning and they don't even realize it, right? Like when you just, you know, told that kiddo that their perseverance was really great and they know that that was, you know, something they'd been working on, that's social emotional learning, you know, that's, or hey, I just saw you not, you know, want to, you didn't leave the room. Way to go, right? That's just pointing out when kids are doing things and when social emotional learning is happening, right? While that was really responsible decision-making you two just made when you had that argument about your group project, you know, those kinds of things. And so she's really trying to help them see where it's at day-to-day in the everyday so that that is more, because having it in a morning meeting or Monday meeting or advisory, depending on what school you're at, is great and that's specific, you know, learning. But again, if you can't generalize that to recess, or you can't generalize that to even reading groups when you're with a partner, then that really hasn't hit the mark. You know, our hope is that kids are learning these skills to take with them in their day-to-day.
And then my final question is around resources for adult caregivers. Where can adults go when they're looking for some help?
Can you say more about?
As far as, like, we've had Family Focus Forum, or we've had workshops before. We have, there's other websites that we can access, like the College and Career Help. What does that look like for our?
Okay, thank you. We actually just had Friday night, we had a parent, a caregiver meeting for our Latinee parents. And they specifically asked for a social worker to come and talk to them at their next meeting about things that are happening in the district and social emotional learning and all those things. And so those are ways that we can get at parents. And then we do, I know that you all have been working on some, some website type things and we just, breaking today, we have really cool posters that are going to be available for, in the schools, just so parents can walk in and say, what, what is this social emotional learning thing that you're talking about? You know, and really see like, oh, sense of belonging. Okay, where does that go and what does that mean? And so we're hopeful that that will help as well, just in spreading the word, right? And my guess is, I, I don't know for sure, but my guess is that principals also in their coffee chats and things like that, or can talk about it and speak to what we're doing.
Any other questions? Thank you. We really appreciate it. Are you staying put, Dr. Crane?
Well, that's what I was wondering. I just made my notes, but it's, it's nice to be able to see you, to be honest.
While you're grabbing your notes, I'll just introduce the topic you're going to speak to us about is the 2025-26 high school course proposals.
Are you excited?
Very excited.
I'm excited. All right. So you're going to learn a little bit, my guess is you've already looked at them, about the six courses that we are proposing. We did try to get real tight on, you can't just add a class, any old class you want. You have to actually come in front of the board and get it approved. So you see everything from Survey of Agriculture to Vocal Workshop, because we want to make sure you know all the classes that you're approving and that are new in the district. Of course, we're focused on Instructional Excellence and Career and College Readiness. Sorry, I'm going ahead of you. So I want to make really, really clear that just because we approve a class here does not mean it has to happen. It just means it could happen. And if we don't get your approval, then we can't even put it on the forecast list to see if kids would be interested, or talk to kids to see if they'd be interested, or try to find a teacher to see if we could find someone. So that's why some of this, like, I have very high hope that we could offer Survey of Agriculture. And I'm not going to promise you that right now for next year, but I want to have it as an option so that we can work toward that. And obviously, this would be optional, it would be for kids in any grade, nine through 12, and it would really be an overview of agricultural topics. The next one is Survey of Trades. Similarly, we want to make sure that kids, and Erica spoke to this, but we want to make sure that kids can see the variety of things that can happen in trades. It's hard to get excited about something that you've never kind of experienced. And I know my personal kids, I'm sure yours, and, and myself, I guess, I get, sometimes I go, wow, I didn't even know that was a thing or a job or a thing I could do. And that was fun, you know? My daughter started welding and I, she would have never welded had she not taken just an intro class. And I was like, you're going to what? But they never know until they take it. Okay. The next one is actually?
Can I say something just about that one? As you, as you know, at our current high school, we have the opportunity for students to kind of explore woods, for the most part. They really would like to do welding. You can't really put those in the same study, for obvious reasons. And so we've talked about adding an additional class that would be around welding, electrical, HVAC, and probably Intro to Machining, because our partners at CCC have a lot of those amazing classes. And sometimes without having a taste, it's hard to feel confident like crossing the field and going to those classes. So that's kind of the idea behind this new class.
Our goal would be that they spend two weeks of the class, not two full weeks, but like during class, they actually go to the campus and see the things that, like, if you took the next class, check this out, what tool you'd get to use, right? That's, that's how we envision it. And we also hope that the schools, the three schools can work together so that if they're all on the same, similar schedules in a semester, then you could go and do welding at Case, you know, and you could take Woods at Oregon City High School. I'm sorry, I was going quickly and I should slow down because that is a really important point. The next one's important too, because this one is required based on the new requirements from Oregon for the class of 2027 and beyond. And so we do offer some personal finance, but it's, it's not, it wasn't completely aligned to the new standards. And so we really wanted to make sure we did a new course proposal. And later in the spring, I'll also be bringing our curriculum proposal for that class, because we know this one we're going to offer and we have a plan for that and we're excited about it. I mean, you can see the stuff that they're going to learn, that's important work that kids need, adults need. The next one is the same, it's required, Higher Education and Career Planning. This one is unique because they have to get a .5 credit through the course of their high school time. We don't actually think waiting until your senior year to take Higher Education and Career Planning is your best move. But we also don't think your freshman year, you might be ready for it. So what we've done is we've got a team together and we've organized a .125 credit every single year of the four years. So you do a little bit of the standards every year with the idea that you can adjust along the way, but so that by the end of your senior year, or perhaps the middle of your senior year, you really have a good plan and you know what you're doing. So, you know, what Erica and Kevin have been doing with people one-on-one or in small groups or career fairs, we want to keep doing that and we want to get it kind of utilized in the, or documented in, we'll, we'll use an aviance for that. Vocal Workshop, this is for students to be able to really practice their vocal skills. What I really love about this is, one, it has multiple genres, including all the, all the ones you see there. But also, you don't have to be great. She, she said you can be a beginner and come to my vocal workshop class. And I thought that was pretty cool. I'm not going to take her up on it, but I definitely would have needed the beginner course. And then we do have, well, OXLA really offers a class that's kind of a thinking through what high school is and what high school means and how we are successful. But we, when we looked at the standards and we looked at the curriculum, we just really felt like it was most transparent to just bring it here and say, we, we need this class. We want all three high schools to have it as an option, not a requirement, but something that could help students who need it to really think through how they can make sure that they are successful. Okay. Any questions?
What just, go ahead, Ted. Have you thought about maybe possibly bringing the local unions in to discuss some of the classes with the trades in regards to the trade schools as well? You have the IEBW 48 for the electrical, you have the Iron Workers 29, you have the Local 290 for the plumbers and fitters. And knowing that, and a lot of people that I know that are heavily in the trades, those are actually probably key pieces that you might want to look at because those are part of the career and college readiness. And something, because they do offer apprenticeships in the four to five year and offer the education for each one of those two, so.
So the first thing I'm going to do is check with Kevin and see which ones we're already connected with, if any?
Okay.
Because I hope we are. You just rattled off things, so the second thing I'm going to do is ask you to send those to me, the actual names of them. But I love that idea. Mike Sted will be doing some work with, well, he is doing some work to make sure that we are, we are intentionally maximizing the amount of Perkins dollars we get. And one of the ways we do that is to make sure we have a full pathway. And so we need three courses for a pathway. Those courses can count classes that they take at CCC as a high school student. So like, our hope is actually that Intro to Trades would be like class one of three, but it would be, you could do the welding version, you could do the, a different trades version, you could do the woods version. And then we would get, again, we want to maximize those, that funding, which will be part of integrated grants, but also it's just great for kids because then they end up getting, hopefully- up getting, hopefully, apprenticeships and then while paying high need, high demand jobs in our community. So that's an excellent idea. Thank you.
A lot of them do, a lot of them don't. It depends, I think it depends on the industry and the trade. I mean, there's so many different unions that exist in Oregon, that you'd have to actually go all the way down the list and pick up other not to have a relationship. Probably the big ones they probably do, but I don't know about all the other ones.
That's great. Thank you.
Chair Wilson?
Yeah.
I'm coming from the, I just wanted to mention also to you, Dr. Crane, that there is a Women in Trades organization that would be a great organization to connect our young women who have an interest in trades. And I will shoot that to you as well.
Thank you so much. We're trying to really gather all our partners on one spreadsheet, because what we found, we had, like, Kevin was reaching out to some people, Erica was, some people at the middle school were. And so we're trying to just like, who do we have? And so any ideas you have for us, we're happy to reach out to people and see if they want to partner. And I'm happy to ask Kevin if he already has a relationship with people, or if that's one we can garner.
Mine's more of a comment, right, from my experience here at the college, around the difficulty of recruiting those industry professionals to teach classes. That's really a struggle, and the reality is that they're making money, and, you know, professionally, they're not necessarily going to want to come teach. So just thinking outside the box on how to make sure that we can offer those opportunities is going to be important. And my second question is around having a student that's supposed to graduate in 2027, these new classes that are proposed.
Yeah. We have a plan. Don't you worry. We have a plan. Yes. We do have a plan. We'll do, in Monday meetings, that's what they call, like, advisory at OCHS, that is when they'll, and they'll catch up with the Naviance stuff, because we know that they didn't get, you know, the years they didn't get. But it won't, it won't be that hard. It'll just be a bigger focus of their Monday meetings than it maybe would have been. There's plenty of time. It's just we throw in other topics. So we won't do that for students when they need to. And then the personal finance will be a junior class mostly, and we'll get people through. And that, what that might mean is that we have more at first, right? We have several openings and, or, you know, offerings. And then after that, we'll level out. So we do know that they need it, don't you worry. Also, you asked about CTE. One of the things that's great for CTE teachers is that we, there are some, there's some flexibility with licensure, which you probably know, but maybe everybody doesn't. And so it's just important to know that if you're out there and you want to help students, you know, learn a trade, we probably have a way, even if you don't have, you don't have to be a licensed teacher, for us to find a way for that to happen.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Crane. Are you staying put for the next one, too? Okay. Moving on, the last report and discussion is Policy First Reads, Dr. Spitzer and Dr. Crane.
Do mine first?
No, yours is bigger. I'll do mine first.
Okay.
So tonight, you have three policy proposals in front of you, one which we've been waiting a long time for. But the first one I want to talk about is JFE, Pregnant and Parenting Teens. Minimal changes to this policy. It just starts off with the non-discrimination portion of it, in terms of making sure that any pregnant or parenting teen has full access to their education, and some update to language throughout. At the very end, it says, "The superintendent designated will develop guidelines necessary to ensure..." Just so you know, Sarah Craig over at OXXLA kind of serves as our primary liaison for any pregnant or parenting teen. Historically, in the last, I don't know, a while, our pregnant or parenting teens have moved to North Clackamas for their education. That really isn't in line with our values, and we'd like to keep our kids and potentially their children in our district. And so she's working really hard to make sure that she works with them individually, to make sure that their needs are being served here in our district. So we currently have one parent in our school system that has a plan and support plan. And there is guidance through Oregon Department of Education that we follow in terms of making sure all of the support pieces that are in place are afforded to the parent and the child. The second policy is admission of resident students. And the primary reason that this one's in front of you is there's been some new legislation regarding offering an alternative certificate to a student, or in lieu of that, it is now a certificate of attendance. And you'll hear more about that in Dr. Crane's presentation. There's also some language in here around that the board may give, deny, school admissions to certain students, or the board may do the, this or that. You actually give me the authority to make sure that we take care of our kids. So there's just some updating language on that one as well.
Yeah, that was my question, just the change from district to board on a couple of those.
Yeah, I think, I think we, we were, I mean, that wouldn't be something that the board would come in and do. You would just grant that permission. And really, we follow the guidance of the state. So there are some things that a student might be expelled for, that they would continue, especially like a weapons violation. We would continue that expulsion. It gives us the ability to serve the student through a tenor in teaching, online education, something like that. Some districts choose not to do that. But again, we want to serve all of our kids, no matter what choices they made in the past.
Okay, and this is a presentation that normally I would do at our next meeting. This would just be your first read. But because it feels meaty, we wanted to make sure to get you the information. And I, I just want to lay out that next time, when we meet, Monday, the three principals, the three high school principals are going to come, and they'll be able to answer your questions. And so if you could listen, take in the information, write down your questions, and then we'll have a full discussion next week. That would be great. Just want to make sure you have the information, though. And you know, I'm going to tell you the next slide, that I, my hope is you look at the proposed changes, okay? And then we're connected to the strategic plan in Career and College Readiness, Instructional Excellence, and Robust Systems of Belonging and Well-being. So there was a committee that came together last spring that included one of you, a counselor, and a, maybe more than one counselor, I feel like you should be speaking to this, but, and AP, the AP for the seniors, which is an assistant principal, the principal, a math teacher, a special education teacher, the credit recovery teacher, a parent, and like, one of the career and college coordinators. And their goal was really, that what they saw was some new things that were coming from the state, like the personal finance and the higher education and career planning class, as well as they, they looked at the course catalog, the policy, the AR, the law, and everything wasn't meshing, it wasn't matching. And so it was important that the group really took a minute to look at all that and try to come up with a draft of ideas that would match. So one, they, so they, I think, had several meetings, but at least three, I think, at least, yeah. And so their key changes in the draft policy, some are required, right? So we just talked about personal finance, higher ed and career planning, that's required, that's now in the policy, and that actually came from OSBA, that language. And we want to make sure that we do that, so our students are meeting the Oregon requirements. But then there's some others that are specific to us. And that includes, and I do want to let you know that one of the things that the committee did is they looked at other districts in our area to say, what are their policies? What do they do? What are their practices and procedures? To make sure that we were in alignment with that as well. So right now, there's an honors diploma and an advanced diploma. The advanced diploma is more rigorous than the honors diploma. They've combined those in the draft to be one diploma, so there's not two different options there. Aligned with what's happening around the, in our area, they moved the 3.8 GPA requirement for that to 3.5, and the 3.0 foreign language requirement to two. We know that to get into a university, a four-year university, you need two years. So three is, you know, great. And if they want to take three, they certainly can. But having that be a requirement didn't seem necessary, again, to the team. And then there are additional advanced placement options. So one example is that you could, you, in order to get an honors diploma, you had to take English, honors English 10. And that means in 10th grade, you had to know that you were going to be on this trajectory. And so part of what they're trying to do is expand the options, so that if in 11th grade, you go, you know, I, I can do this, I'm going to take some more AP classes. Cool, let's do it, right? And so we want to make sure that kids can, and it doesn't have to be just these specific, like the ELA AP classes. If it's an AP class, it's a, you know, a quality rigorous class. So I want to make sure that you know that this does not impact, and the words are almost identical in the old course catalog and the new proposed course catalog, based on this policy, for the honors court banquet. So the honors diploma was different than the honors court. See how much I've learned in the last few weeks? Separate things, and so honors court is intact. Still have your banquet, still have the exciting being an honors court recipient, okay? And the current juniors who wanted to get the honors diploma can still get the honors diploma. We won't take that away from them. And it would be like, the next year, we would roll out the change. Okay? One of the things that is also good to know is that colleges don't adjust their criteria based on the type of diploma you get. So sometimes I think we have in our heads that something is really cool, and a, and a college will be like, oh, I want that person. And actually, I mean, they look at a lot of things, but part of it is, are you a well-rounded person? Did you take classes that were, you know, maybe outside of your comfort zone, et cetera? Which is the other thing that the GPA change does. So you might think, why would we lessen the GPA? One thing that a high GPA requirement does is discourage kids from taking classes that may be difficult, or they may perceive to be difficult, because they're like, ew, that might mess up my GPA, right? And so we want to encourage kids to take classes and try them, even if they're going to be hard. And if, you know, you get in a B+, that, you can be excited about that B+. And it's not going to mess up your graduation requirements. The other thing to note, on the next slide, please, is just that there are some changes in ODE rules that are requiring us to change our policy for all, for students who are identified with having disabilities. And those are specific to modified diploma. And we used to have a certificate, or we used to have an alternate certificate, which was considered a final, a finishing thing. And now that's going to be a certificate of attendance, and the requirements will be slightly less. So Ms. Berg can answer all your questions about that next week, but just know that's not something coming from the committee that's separate, that just are also required as part of our policy for graduation. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board? Oh, sorry. I just meant in general. Yeah. Okay, so moving on, we have our consent agenda. And just for those listening in, consent agenda is regular housekeeping items that we've all been aware of early, and we vote on them together just for convenience and expediency. So do I have, we don't need to have any discussion? Is there anyone who would like to move to approve the consent agenda?
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. This is Pamela.
Thank you, Pamela. Ms. Beck, will you please pull the board?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Moving on, we have Approve Resolution 2425, authorizing the sale of general obligation bonds and refunding bonds.
And Mr. Sweeten is at a conference, so I'm stepping in for him this evening. Very exciting. As you know, since we have passed our bond, the next step is to hire a director to run our bond, and then, which we're working on right now. We just closed the application pool last week and have some good candidates that we'll start working on screening and bringing in for interviews. And then the second is selling the bonds. So we work with Piper Sandler, who helps us with the sale of the bonds, and we're just starting those conversations. But this is an important step for the board, to accept the voting and to accept and approve us working on, or giving us the authorization to sell the bonds. So this is what this document's about.
I would like to move to approve 2425-222, a resolution of Oregon City School District Number 62, Clackamas County, Oregon, authorizing the sale of general obligation bonds and refunding bonds.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Beck, will you please pull the board?
I'd say just a little celebration.
Thank you, everybody.
Oh, I couldn't hear, sorry. Aye.
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 Aye. Congratulations to the district. This is great news. Okay, moving on to Approve Budget Committee Calendar.
The board has asked to approve the 2526 Budget Committee Calendar. Most likely, the final numbers from the legislative session would not be released until after the May forecast. With this timeframe, we made the decision to move our meeting dates later in the calendar year in an attempt to get the most accurate data possible. Please also note that May 27th is a Tuesday. Monday, May 26th is Memorial Day.
Is there a motion to approve the calendar?
Yeah, Chair Wilson, I move to approve the Budget Committee Calendar for planning of the 2025-26 budget.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Great. Is there any discussion?
March 17th is St. Patrick's Day.
What's that?
That's a, that's a taboo.
March 17th is St. Patrick's.
Oh, it is.
Ms. Beck, will you please pull the board?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Director White?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Dr. Spitzer, just a request on who the committee members will be up for the spots that need to be filled, and so that we can get a pool of candidates for those going.
Yes, we, we had planned on doing that in January last time, when we kind of posted them in December, then we didn't actually screen them on time. So yes, in January.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, so moving on to approving the OSBA resolution to amend the dues schedule, and I'll just speak a little bit to this. Those of us who attended the Legislative Roadshow heard a little bit about this. And we learned that it has been some time since the dues have been updated. And so these, they shared a little bit about it, but materials didn't come out until recently. So that is why it's on the agenda tonight. Has everyone had a chance to review the dues, or would you like me to review them?
No, we've had a chance to review, but we have to vote to open a discussion, don't we?
I just didn't know if you had any questions.
Well, I mean, we can, can we discuss then, before we?
Would you want to, is there a motion to, to approve the amended dues?
I move to approve the OSBA fee schedule.
Great. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great. Now we can have a discussion, Deb.
Okay. So the issue that I have is the fact that this is a lot of money. It's a lot of money over the next five years. It's double from one year to the next. And then they also talk about following, oh, I think, where was it? The Consumer Price Index. Well, the Consumer Price Index is a variable index, so it goes up and down depending on what's going on. We're paying if it goes up, but we're not getting a refund if it goes down. And that's where I have a problem with this, is that in six years, a matter of six years, it's over doubling our dues. That's insane.
So what we heard at the Legislative Roadshow was just that the reason that there's such a steep increase is because they haven't had those, they haven't had the incremental increases. So I totally appreciate your feedback. I don't have more information beyond what it reflects.
I do think they said that they had not raised the dues since 1999.
Yeah, it's. Yeah, it's been considerable amount of time.
But 15-year increases for the next six years, where is the money coming from? The money are coming straight from our students. And I think that that's the issue that I have, is that we are going to have to foot this bill over the next six years and we've already asked the constituents to pass a bond to improve our schools and now we're taking money away from our students in regards to this. And so I have a massive problem with this and the fact that it's on the agenda with no discussion. The only discussion is now. There is no opportunity for feedback. There is no opportunity for anything. This has to be devoted on by December 15th, I think it is. And there has been zero opportunity for us to discuss this as a group, any, the next three motions at that. And so I think that I have a massive problem with this, that this should be probably tabled and talked about before we actually give a vote to OSBA. Whether or not we do a special session or something like that, we should probably have a little bit more information in regards to this. Because telling us that that's going to happen and then telling us that everything after that is going to be based on Consumer Price Index and then Consumer Price Index is a variable index, you're asking us to pay more if it goes up, but you're not giving us the refund if it goes down.
I hear you.
So what I didn't understand in reading it, yeah, I have a lot of questions too and I'm not opposed to it necessarily at all because I think that the things that they offer to us save us a lot of money. If we had to go out and find those things ourselves, that would be difficult. But I don't understand what it, I don't even, what do we pay now?
It shows in, there's a fee schedule.
I missed that.
That shows the current, at the bottom, the current dues and then the proposed.
Funny, I never went down that far.
It's okay.
I'm looking at it right now. So we're.
We'd be the number nine, correct?
Yeah, number nine, that's what I was thinking, yeah. So yeah, doubles it. I see where, I couldn't figure out where you were saying it was doubling it. That makes sense.
I mean, it's a pretty aggressive fee increase that.
We discussed that at the Legislative Roadshow, you and I, so yeah.
It is, it is aggressive. I think one of the challenges that you have with member associations is that if they literally have not, in 30 years, have not raised dues substantially, then they're needing to catch up. I mean, that happens to the best of us, right? It does mean, and again, this organization is being led by volunteers, but clearly something should have been done about this before this point. That being said, I am very sure that we get, we get much more than $18,000 a year in services.
I mean, I would say that the service they offer that I really think can offset the cost, though I do, I do agree that this is kind of egregious, is pace.
Horrendous.
And, and the very cheap legal support that they do provide if needed. So that is somewhat of an insurance policy in terms of legal representation and advice. So that is, that is the upside that I see there, but I don't disagree that it's a very large, very fast increase.
Now, this, all these resolutions here down go, we're, we're members of this and if we pass it or don't pass it, it still could go up because the members of the association could pass it and it could, regardless of if we said no, it could still pass.
But the opportunity for non-discussion and the opportunity of non-review is what is probably number one on my list and number two is how much it's going up. You're, it's a 15% a year until year 2030 and then it's on top of that, then it goes after the Consumer Price Index. That's insanity. That's, you're basically going $10,000 more in four years, five years.
And from a point of view of the cost to us, I don't agree that it's insanity. I, I see that it can be egregious and that people feel overwhelmed by it. I, what I, what it doesn't tell us here is why it's never been dealt with before. And that is what concerns me. It hasn't increased since 98, 9, 88, 89 fiscal year. That's a long time ago.
And really, all that was shared about that, you know, because there's new leadership of OSBA was just that it hadn't happened previously, but there wasn't much discussion as to the reasoning behind that. I'm sure we can all understand the difficulty and the reluctance to want to raise dues.
Sure. And also the reluctance to talk about, again, the organization's run by volunteers, right? But they do have staff. So yeah, that's, that's a hard one. I personally don't think it's a, while the increase is egregious, I don't think the cost is egregious, even five years from now or six years, whatever it is, six years, seven years.
Debbie, maybe you can answer this for me because I don't know the answer to it. What's the average, like, Consumer Price Index rate?
Anywhere between 2 and 7%.
Yeah.
On average. And then sometimes it goes down to negative. So it just all depends on the year. And that's the problem is now you're, you're up to a variable, variable price every year. So it could go up, it could go down. But the problem is, is if you read what they're stating, they're stating that the total associate revenue has fallen 19.1% in the past 25 years. So since 1996 until now, it's gone 19%. The first year increase for us is 15%. The next year increase is 15%. The following increase is 15%. That is well over the 19% that they've said revenue has fallen in 24 years. So I have a prob, the math isn't mapping and that's the problem that I have. That's the only way to describe it. The math is not mapping. So the demand that they're asking does not contribute or does not fall in line with what their revenue decline is.
So the revenue decline up to now?
Correct.
So the question would be if they're asking us for 15% now, why don't they just ask us for 20% over two years and then add it at that point? They don't give rationale for the 15% per year for seven years.
Correct.
I see what you're saying.
Have they stated the pushback many other districts? I mean, how do we find out? Because, I mean, we've been fiscally, financially, fairly frugal and we've been doing really good with our budget and we're not getting hit near as hard as a lot of the districts in the state of Oregon. So what happens if we all start voting and saying no? What are they going to do? Are they, are we going to call their bluff?
Well, I don't know that it's a bluff. I don't, I don't think that's a fair assessment of what they're trying to do. They are an organization, a membership organization, so we have every right to tell them what we think or whether we agree or don't agree. I would agree with you because it's statewide, right? We don't meet, like, it would have been really great if they had brought this in during their November meeting, right? Said, we're going to be talking about this and, and then you can bring it back to the, to the, to your organization. I mean, for them, for them to say we have to vote on it before the 15th and this is the first time we've heard about it, I have, I too have, feel like that's not a real great way, really transparent. And we have a lot of questions.
And I would say, they did, at the Legislative Roadshow, they did talk about how, I mean, they're running out of money. I mean, they put on these conventions that are, I would say, decreasing in quality because they don't have the money they used to, but at the same time, like.
And they don't have the staff.
Well, because they don't have the money. And while I think that is a valid concern and I do think that this is an organization that provides value, this is an odd way of going about fixing that revenue problem by this aggressive a fee structure. So I, I understand the need, but I am also concerned about the way it was presented and the scale at which it is presented.
And I think just what I heard was, and what, you know, we heard from Alex, is it would just be level of service is what would be impacted. So.
I think that if they had a more realistic increase schedule, like if you're going over the next five years to make up the 20%, I have no problem with that, but you're tacking 15% year after year. That's insane. I mean, that's, I mean, I wish we all could get raises of 15% a year and I think that we ought to, you do see what I'm saying? I understand that they, they've lost revenue and I, I understand that and I, and I sympathize with that and I have no problem bringing it up to where it needs to be.
Sure.
But then all of a sudden, voting for the next five years to continually increase it and then base it off Consumer Price Index, which is a variable index, I'm not really, yeah, no, I, that's, that's where I'm kind of like, that's not probably the best business decision that we could make. I mean, yeah, it gives us an idea of how much we're going to be spending over the next five years for budgetary reasons, but it's not, it's not in our best interest, I should say.
At least not with some questions answered. And I, I don't completely disagree with what Debbie has to say. I don't, again, I don't think they're trying to gouge us. They're trying to serve us in a way that they see as, I mean, it's a service organization. It's an association. We, if we feel strongly as a group that we don't support this, then we have, we should vote that way.
Heidi, did you?
It just needs to be clear how we use OSBA, like the resources they do provide and the services we do get and what that would mean if we decide not to be part of it or not to support this. Like, there is definitely ramifications and just want to.
Yes, I agree.
Make sure that we're.
And I would say as a chair, I had the opportunity probably three or four times to speak with a lawyer and also, gosh, I can't even remember, maybe it was a policy person, because, because of the things I didn't understand and what, and didn't know how to move forward on. So, you know, to get a lawyer to talk to you for a half an hour about policy and/or a legal situation adds up pretty quickly. But when you want to be responsible, that, you know, they're serving us in that way, among other things. They also, our, our staff, you know, the district staff is able to reach out to them and get understanding from them. They do all of the policy writing so that it is up to the letter of the law. So there's just a lot here that we would be, that we are looking at losing services if we chose not to, not to support them later if they, if it goes ahead and goes up.
Okay, I also, looking at the fee structure, like, 18,000, say 3031, so 18, it'd be $18,111 for us because we're a 5,000 to 10,000 district. But in terms of fee parity, it's only $8,000 more if you're over 25,000 and PBB's budget is, what, 10 times ours? So there is not a ton of parity in that fee schedule and that is concerning, particularly aimed at middle-sized districts like ours.
Yeah.
And so that is concerning to me. It's tough. I, I also wish that we'd had more time to discuss this and I wish this had been done in a more transparent way by OSBA where we were able to give proper feedback to them and have conversations about it.
And I just, yeah, and just to speak to that, again, you are right that they need our vote by December 15th, so I don't know that having a special session is feasible between now and then.
And then what if you, some of our colleagues had got to go to the roadshow and there's other members that might not have sent anybody there and not just got this and be like, wow. So this might not go over well with some of the members right now. And I too, like Pamela, have used the lawyers several times. It is a good service to bounce some things off early on and then recently checking about doing some, maybe some coaching for the district, but they get back to you pretty quick and have a, that's the service I like. The rest of the OSBA, I don't care for, but the lawyer services probably where that money is well spent, but I don't know about that.
Along with policy writing, for sure.
It's debatable.
Well, we would be paying somebody to write those policies if we didn't get those.
Yeah.
I think is what Pamela's saying.
That's what I mean. They're, they're keeping us up to date on all of those policies and sometimes they, if we had to, we'd have a person just doing that. We'd have to pay a person just to do that and it would be a lot more than $18,000. And that's in seven years. It's a lot more, it would be a lot more than 8,000 now.
Is there any more discussion? Okay. We're hearing.
It's frustrating, man.
Yeah, it is. And I appreciate the frustration. It sounds like there's not any more discussion, so Ms. Beck, will you pull the board?
We haven't had a motion yet, have we?
We did.
Oh, okay. I missed it, sorry.
It's okay. I think you were the second, weren't you? We've just been discussing long enough, Pamela, that.
And I just forgot, sorry.
Debbie brought this up, I just wanted to say it again. Do we want, we have until the 15th?
Which is a Sunday.
Which is, which is Sunday. Is there interest in doing a special session before that if we want to have more conversation about this? Let's just, let's just say that because I don't want anybody going into this feeling like they got sandbagged. This sucks. It's short notice, not a lot of information, there's a lot going on here. I would like us to be able to approach it and feel decent about things afterwards.
This, plus the other motions that are on, that are coming up, none of those have been discussed, the questions that need to be answered, the input that is needed, the wording on some of them are hilarious, but it, it feels like this is thrown at us and like last year when we approved the amendments to the bylaws of OSBA, it was like two or three things that had to do with write-in votes and that was it. It was just wording on write-in votes. So reading that and understanding that is, you know, fine. This is completely different. This is a financial decision that we have to make as a board and we have to be fiscally responsible with the monies that we're taking from all of the, all the things that we get and use it wisely. Is this wise? Is, is taking a 15% increase annually wise and then basing it off a variable interest and then never having to vote on it again, is that, is that sensible? We don't know. And so that's, that's something that you need to look into. And if the Consumer Price Index goes down, do we get a refund? Do our fees get lowered? Because that's another question too, because are they going to charge us and continually charge us upwards? But do we get the discount if it goes down? Because at times it does go down to negative two, negative three, negative four. So there are times that we do get that back. And so do we get the money back if it does go back that, that far? That's the other question at hand. So the financial aspect on this one right here, I think that it deserves more questions answered. And I think that, I mean, tabling this and the other two behind it so we can sit down and talk about this, I would prefer to do. I don't know what everybody's availability is before Sunday. I don't want to put you in a position where you have to sit for three hours and figure this out, but questions need to be answered. And if we have an opportunity to make these questions or get these questions answered, I think that probably benefit us as a board rather than just rubber stamping things.
I would be willing to do that. I would, but like, we would, it would be good if we could ask questions to OSBA and get some answers before, you know what I mean?
Agreed.
And so I don't know how, what that process is, but.
Debbie's mentioned.
I will motion, well, it would come down to, are we willing to meet? So I'm willing to meet.
Debbie's mentioned the other resolutions, are those due by the 15th as well?
Yep.
So this whole package is, okay.
This whole package.
Because we don't technically meet till the 16th, so.
Correct. So it's one day before our next meeting, so that's why I said I wish we would have had it earlier because then we could have at least, you know, discussed this as a group, talked about it, figured out what, what bothers you, what bothers me, what, what, you know, knowing more about what OSBA provides, like you were asking or I think Mike was asking. Just things like that, being able to discuss that, being able to do those things, I think that it would benefit us rather than putting us in a position where we have to vote in, like, on something that's going to be put in motion in seven days that it impacts us as a district.
So again, I want to point out that, so we've spent so far, I think 15, 20 minutes on this and while, while I understand your concern, I also want to point out it's $18,000, which is not a lot of money in the scope of our big, in the scope of our budget, in the things we should be concerned about. I don't, I don't disagree that maybe this is, but maybe we, I mean, we can vote no if we want to and we make that statement, this is why we voted no, because you didn't give us this kind of information and we felt pushed into it. So I mean, there is that option.
It's also tough. It's tough right now for us to schedule something because it's the holidays, so I'm sure we all have very busy calendars this week. I do. And, but I'm, I'm willing to carve out time to do this in the sake of board unity and getting on the same page with all this, so.
Especially if we can do it by Zoom.
And one more point, we can't make edits to these documents. We're voting on them as it is. So I, even if you don't like the language in one of them, then we.
Doesn't matter.
So if we met, we wouldn't be able to change that language. So I don't know if it's necessary on the other two, but maybe the information.
Well, I think we should just, right now, we're just voting on this one.
Okay. No, I was just, for clarity, I was...
Yeah, yeah.
Sure. Are we prepared to vote, then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Ms. Beck, will you please pull the board?
Director Cantola?
Nay.
Director Rockwell?
Aye.
Director Reeves?
Nay.
Director Stroh?
No.
Director White?
Did she say me? I can't hear. Aye.
Director Halpern?
Aye.
Director Wilson?
Aye.
Director Harris?
I cannot hear Ms. Beck, just FYI.
Thanks, Pamela. We'll make sure to clarify any questions for you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to approve OSBA resolution to amend the OSBA bylaw, 2023 bylaws. And this resolution has amendments, I thought they were outlined. There we go, yes. Some wording in section, in various sections of the bylaws. I don't know that there's necessarily any of particular note, but I'll entertain a motion and then we can discuss them further.
I move that we approve resolution to amend the OSBA 2023 bylaws.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Again, I think that putting something this vast that's going to be corrected in front of us with literally a week's notice is in poor taste. I think that we should have a lot more than that. I think it should be open for discussion and for interpretation, for understanding, and for explanation. Number two, on page 14, it's actually on 4.48, it's actually telling us that the Oregon School Board Members Pride Caucus was established by a vote of the membership in 2024. And we're voting yes on this, but yet the next one is the actual vote on the membership of Pride. So there's, you're actually putting in wording in a document that's saying that we've already voted on it when we haven't even voted on it. And so that's the problem that I'm having right now, is that this has been shoved down our throats, that it's going to be a blanket stamp approval, just a rubber stamp, and no discussion on it.
Debbie, what?
Page 14. 4.4.8.
Director Wilson, or Chair Wilson, I will also point out, you are absolutely correct. However, if it does not pass, they can't put it into the bylaws. That would be an automatic...
They work together, is what you're saying?
Yeah. They would have to pull that because it wouldn't be true. So I, and I, but I don't know why they would do that beforehand. I agree with you.
I'm not sure why they put them together, other than if we were approving them altogether, they needed to be updated in both documents.
Like I said, I, you know, they had, you know, assuming passage of, and so, you know, to that degree, I guess.
And the other thing is, is that there's a change of leadership at OSBA. And this is a document to push in regards to what the new incoming person that's in charge of OSBA wants to see. And so the other issue is that there's been no discussion. This is their template, their thoughts, their wants, and then this is what they're publishing out to us. And again, no time for discussion. And again, no time, no time for edit.
That is not true.
Yeah. Go ahead, Pamela.
That is not true. Thank you. That is not the case. We have two representatives that represent our, that represent Clackamas County. We have every opportunity to discuss with them. The minutes of their meetings come out to us every month. We, this is the decision of the board to bring it to us, not the decision of the leader, that there is a, two persons from each county in the, in the entire state that are on this board, and any one of us can run for those positions. So it might feel like we're not, but because the, you know, some of, some of us choose to be involved in OSBA, and I get that if people don't, that's okay, too. But to say that no, that there's been no input is, is not true. This is not coming to us from one person. It's coming to us from the board.
I'm not talking about input on the OSBA side. I'm talking about here. I'm talking about the internal discussions that we should be having as a board to determine whether or not these agree with what we want to do in our district.
So are you, just moving forward, we could have more standing conversations with, regarding OSBA updates, if that would be helpful in the future?
And a lot more than one week to decide.
Well, I just mean ongoing, because these items have been in the minutes before, so we would have discussed it then. And I'm happy as the chair to add that to the agenda moving, and it's not going to solve the problem today with this, but I'm just, I'm trying to be proactive.
We haven't had it for very long, right?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear your question, Pamela.
We have not had it very long. You have not.
We haven't had these particular edits, but we have, you know, had the minute, we, like you said, we get updates from OSBA. And if maybe we just review some of those more regularly with the, as a board, then that way we would be more up to date.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
So that we don't feel like we're blindsided by this.
I hear you.
Yes. Good idea.
Is there any more discussion?
Just similar to what Chair Wilson, or Chair White said, not Chair White, Director White.
We hear you.
This one didn't surprise me. I knew that, that because of attending some of those OSBA conferences, that this was, something was being discussed and being put forward by OSBA leadership, so.
Great. Not everybody can attend the OSBAs. Some people have other things, other projects going on. Not everybody can attend the OSBAs.
Well, and even at the roadshow, that was just kind of like touched on and then pushed through real fast. It wasn't ever an open discussion, like, let's have, you know.
Yeah. It was a presentation.
What was coming out and then just skipped over. Because I went to it, but it was just kind of like...
But we can go to the, to the board meetings if we ask to go.
Yes.
Just so you know.
I can also, I mean, I can talk to how the Pride Caucus came to be, but I was going to do that with the next one.
I think, just hold it till the next one.
Let's finish this one, yeah.
Could we, we could always invite our county OSBA rep to come and give us an update.
Absolutely.
Like, if this is an annual deal, we could maybe have him come in November, and then maybe we put that on our calendar, and then they could...
That's a good idea.
OSBA also would send somebody if we asked them to, to come talk to the board.
OSBA's been to our meetings before with stuff. But it's just, yeah, sometimes their emails get full of stuff, and we don't, there's something every day, so.
You have to know what, yeah, where it's coming from. I agree. It's a lot.
Great. Ms. Beck, will you please pull the board?
Director Hayes?
Nay.
Director Rockwell?
Aye.
Director Stroh?
No.
Director Cantola?
Nay.
Director White?
Pamela, she's saying you.
Thank you. Aye.
Director Halpern?
Aye.
Director Wilson?
Aye.
Okay. And the last one is to amend the bylaws relating to the composition of the Board of Directors. And this is the one that includes amending for the Pride Caucus. And I would actually just like to invite Director Halpern to share a little bit about that because he's actually serves on the caucus rather than me introducing the item.
Sure. So I have a member of the Pride Caucus, which started over a year ago as an advisory committee. And how advisory committees become a caucus in the OSBA, where they get a voting position on the Board of Directors, is they have to go through a period of time as an advisory committee where they don't receive any funding, they don't have any say, but just to see what kind of impact they can have and what supports they can provide to member districts. And the reason that I'm so supportive of the Pride Caucus is really representation. And I know that having a person who is representing your community, particularly in rural districts where there may not be a ton of LGBT people that are in the public eye, having representation really says a lot to LGBT students, to see someone in that position. And I would say, as kind of part of our strategic plan, student belonging and wellness really plays into student belonging, which is that representation matters. People see someone like them, and they think, well, if that person is able to do that, then that is something that I can do. And in some of these communities, that might be the only person that they see directly. And that's why this is an issue that's so important to me. So that is why I'm supportive of the Pride Caucus. I understand issues with OSBA. I have issues with OSBA. I think this particular thing, there's also, there is a rural caucus, which was, went through the same process, and was developed because a lot of rural communities felt that they were being overshadowed by big districts, which they are. And, and I think that is a very important thing. There is a Members of Color Caucus. And those are the three, those are, those are the two existing caucuses, are Members of Color and Rural. And this would be the third caucus. And there's been talk about changing the way caucuses are formed to make it more difficult because of the way the original caucuses were formed, so that gives them a voting member on the Board of Directors. There's talk of changing that. I don't know. All I know is that I think this is an important thing to do, because I think representation is important. I think kind of standing up for, for these kids is important. But I do understand reservations about OSBA. So this is, I know this is not just me, so.
Great. Is there a motion to approve?
I would move to approve a resolution to amend the school board association's bylaws relating to a composition of the Board of Directors.
Great. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Yeah. So, again, since you were part of the caucus, this could have been brought up another time during a work session to talk about what's going on and how it's forming and things like that. It was not. So I have a massive problem with it. I don't have a problem with what it is, because obviously, like you talked about, the rural caucuses are, you know, exist. But also LGBTQ is well represented, and we have laws in the state of Oregon that are protecting class because of it. There's not a protected class for the rurals, the rural residents. And so I understand where you're coming from 100%, but again, this wasn't talked about before. So you're asking us to vote on things that was never discussed, never talked about, never introduced. So I have a hard time with my conscience voting on things that I know nothing about, that are given to me a week before, and there's been no communication. So it has nothing to do with what it is, and I want everybody to understand that. It has nothing to do with what it is. It has to do with the fact that this is not a rubber stamp board. It never has been. And this is something that we've always been trying to discuss on a regular basis, that we're not getting the information that we need to make informed decisions. And so I have a massive problem with every single one of these, not just this one. I argued more on the financial side than this one. I don't care about what this is. It's the process in which it was presented to us.
Any other comments or questions?
I'm just going to reiterate when it says on here that caucuses shall exist to enhance the work by addressing unique needs. I understand the rural one, because John Day is going to have different requirements and needs than we have. I get that. Again, you're putting another group high up on a pedestal that has 145 days in our calendar for them. Those in my family will tell you they don't want to have the spotlight on them. They just want to exist and go to school. And they feel like the adults in the room continually take and put a magnifying glass on them, making their lives harder. And I said I would share that for their point of view on this, because when you elevate groups, you put shadows on other groups. So to reiterate what the man said at the roadshow, when does it stop? Do we need to have a caucus for parents of people who died of drug overdoses so that they feel represented? Do we need to have another group brought up, that's single parents? Or are we all under OSBA to be together? But every time we try to carve out another hole on this, the divide gets bigger. And I'm tired of the divide. We've been trying so hard to just be humans and embrace all these students. And then these things show up again, and it makes us look, makes me feel like we're not representing the other kids. Because they are not identifying in that particular group. So now, are we looking at them going, you're not good enough? Because we're going to only focus on these guys now. What needs are we not meeting for them? Because I feel like we have all of our programs, we're doing the proclamations, we're doing the Pride Month, we're doing the activities, we have the Gay Straight Alliance Club. We have it all. We're doing things. But there's always this ask for more. So just like that gentleman said, when does it stop? Do we have to have representation for every single group? And then are we no longer under the umbrella of just being representative of our students? That's my concerns.
Chair Wilson?
I would say, I mean, I would say, I understand your perspective completely. I would say, I don't view it as putting groups above other groups because of historical marginalization and how vulnerable so many of those groups are. But again, I don't want to rehash this, and I don't want to keep arguing about it. And I, I appreciate your perspective. And I would also say, where does it stop? Well, if there are other groups that feel they want better representation, that they are marginalized, that they are feeling vulnerable, there is a process to go through if they want to become a caucus. There is a, you have to be an advisory committee for a year. You have to do, jump through a whole lot of hoops. And if people want to do that to get the representation, then we'll vote on it, and we'll go from there. That's, that's my take on it.
Director White?
Yeah, thank you. Well said, Director Halpern. And that's what, I just want to point out, that this is a group of adults who are school board members, who have chosen to request this and get involved in a advisory committee, which is now asking to be a caucus. And so we are not talking about students here. We are talking about other board members who have requested this, and who have already put in a year's worth of work to make that happen. So, and we did the same with the, with the, I can't even remember the name of the other committee, which I joined as a, as an ally when they started.
The Communities of Color.
Thank you, Communities of Color, yeah. And they went through the same process as did the rural communities. And we did vote on that last year, to bring the rurals from a, from a committee to a caucus, so.
Is there any more discussion?
But again, rural communities are not a protected class.
In my opinion, Director Hayes, this has nothing to do with a protected class. This is a group of our colleagues who identify or who are allies of LGBTQ+ communities and are school board members, and they have requested that, that they have a caucus voice. So we, I mean, we can say yes or no, that's up to us. But that's, that's what's been requested. That's what we're voting on.
I don't want to interrupt anybody, so I was waiting my turn. I appreciate the discussion. I agree. I don't agree that caucuses are intended to elevate one group above another. I think that they're intended to level the playing field. And so I really, I don't see a problem with extending the option for a caucus to other groups who are interested also. I heard the gentleman's concerns in the roadshow also, and I just, I understand where he was coming from, but I just don't agree with him that it's a problem to extend opportunity for representation around a table. I think the more voices, the better. And so if there is another group, and we even heard at the last conference, there are other groups that are considering becoming an advisory board to determine if there's a need. And I would encourage them to do so. So that's my two cents. But I just didn't want to cut anybody off. If there's any more comments. Hearing none. Ms. Beck, will you please pull the board?
Director Halpern?
Aye.
Director Cantola?
Nay.
Director Stroh?
No.
Director Hayes?
Nay.
Director Rockwell?
Aye.
Director White?
Aye.
Director Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you. Last, we have board member comments, and... And Pamela, do you want to go first since you're online?
I just want to... I don't have much, but I would like to thank my colleagues for the understanding around my recent not feeling so well and being unable to be as participatory as I would like. And I am feeling much better, and I appreciate your compassion and your understanding. And then I just want to remind people, to remind families, it's a great time when kids are not at school, to read at home and to get involved and to be together. I also realize that it's also hard for families a lot of times. So I just want to wish everyone during this time, where there's so many kids at home, I just want to wish you a really... A really good and family-oriented, if you are in a family, and a community-oriented holiday.
Director Halber?
It is very late, so I will forego several of the things I was going to talk about, which are just fun things that are happening at Hulcom that I'm doing. And I just want to say publicly again, now that this is our first public meeting since the bond has passed. The bond passed. Thank you, everyone. This was a big lift. And it's been a lot of work, and I'm just very excited to kind of move forward. I'd also like to thank the board. I really appreciate that we are able to have frank, open, difficult discussions. I'm genuinely grateful for that. So I think we're doing good as a board, so thank you.
Great. Dr. Blackwell?
I loved Footloose. The high school just finished their run of that, and it was an excellent performance. The choir also is coming up with their all-choir performance on the 17th, and then they'll perform at the Grotto, which is always a wonderful experience if you have an opportunity to do that. And I've just noticed online a number of schools having... Giving trees and opportunities to give to our families this time of year. So if you're able, there's a number of community organizations, and again, the schools that are collecting for families that might need some help. Thanks.
Director Hayes?
First off, thank you guys for all the work you guys did on the bond. I've already told you that many times. But I... Since I was not part of the bond committee getting all that stuff done, I do want, again, thank you all for getting that done. The only thing I have is that Fall Concert was before Thanksgiving break. At Gardner, got to see all the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders perform, which was fantastic. Drumline's doing absolutely phenomenal. They just did this marching little thing that they did.